Councillor's staff, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to start with a couple of announcements about how this meeting will run. First of all, we will be live webcast. There are a number of people who also want to be here in person, so we are also web streaming through to Committee Room Two. And councillor Eagle, his digital presence is on audio video conference call from Perth. He is in a housing conference on behalf of council and will be participating as an elected member. This is our first audio visual conference call meeting since we agreed those in standing orders, so please councillor Eagle and councillors, let us be patient with the system and I'm really delighted that we have an opportunity to test it out. Councillor Eagle will be voting via communicating with the staff when I call for a division and the staff will be recording that vote. He will also indicate at the start of any discussion when he wishes to speak to an item and will be put on the speaking order list, just as anybody who is here would be. So I just want to make a rather sad announcement, which is that a member of our Audit and Risk Committee, external member Kevin Simkins, who I think all of you round the table know, died suddenly and please join with me in making our sincere condolences to his family. It was a very big shock. And of course, we will address, have to address the Audit and Risk membership at some future date and I'll work with the Chair on the process for that. Now, we have moving to apologies. While councillor Eagle is able to move second vote and have all of those matters recorded, his distant presence does not count to our quorum, so I actually will have to have his apologies. And councillor Ahopeni Mercer, thank you very much for also bringing to my, reminding me that sadly another Wellington stolwart passed away. And I know that many of you were very close to Betty Weaver from the eastern suburbs and she was a staunch representative of community views and particularly environmental issues in the east. So again, let us have in the minutes a record of our condolences. So thank you councillor Ahopeni Mercer. So we have got councillor Eagle's apologies from the, so that's from the point of view of the quorum. From, we also have councillor Lee and councillor Foster as apologies for lateness and I don't think we have any other apologies around the table. So do I have a mover? I'll move those apologies that are accepted. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Marsh, and please vote now. The other thing is the voting board has also ceased to operate. It was getting quite rocky, it's been there for about 20 years and we are going to operate by you calling our names.
What we're going to do if it gets to voting.
If it's a division.
If it's a division, it'd be a show of hands, I will call the names for and then I will call the names against.
So, but if it, if nobody calls for a division, you'll just assume it's carried. Okay. Right, so voting on the apologies, those in favour? Aye. So that, I declare that carried. And you are an aye as well Paul, but we're not calling a division, so good to have you there. So I'd now like to move to our wonderful, absolutely positively Wellingtonian awards. We have two of these tonight and traditionally we start with a mehi. So absolutely positively Wellingtonian awards are a way for the council to honour members of our community who have made a significant contribution to the city and for great job in this period. So first of all, it's my pleasure to present an absolutely positively Wellingtonian award to Jonathan Barna Thompson. For 19 years, we could have waited a year, 19 years of voluntary service on the Committee of Diabetes Wellington Incorporated. Diabetes Wellington is a charitable organisation available to assist Wellingtonians with diabetes, dedicated to raising awareness and funds. They work very hard to keep the general Wellington public informed about services, awareness campaigns and also any new developments about the condition. Jonathan's volunteered on the Diabetes Wellington Committee for almost two decades and he's been either president or vice president. Jonathan's wife Peggy, who's also here, is a diabetic, so he's well positioned to understand the kind of support and information that those with diabetes and their families and friends and workmates are in need of. Peggy is a field officer at Diabetes Wellington and she and Jonathan have dedicated a lot of their time to the charity. As well as the committee responsibilities at Diabetes Wellington, Jonathan has helped out at stores, produced newsletters and put significant effort into fundraising and since stepping down from the committee, he's continued to be involved with the organisation as the information centre's IT fixer. Maybe we should ask him about the voting board. And your generosity with time is admirable and your commitment to the Wellington's diabetic community is very much appreciated. So on behalf of the council and the citizens of Wellington, I'd like to thank Jonathan, declare him an absolutely positively Wellingtonian and invite him up to receive a certificate and say a few words if he wishes. Tenakoto, tenakoto, tenakoto katoa.
Thank you Celia, I really appreciate this award. It came as a complete surprise and I'm sure as many people who get these awards will tell you they don't do this sort of work for the, for the accolades I suppose, but you do it because you want to do it and you want to help the people that you want to help. And I guess in my case, that has been people with diabetes and listen, it's great to have a number of my fellow volunteers, either in the room or adjacent with, who have helped out Diabetes Wellington in the time. I can't do this solely by myself, you know, as with many community organisations, you need a whole bunch of people who work. What you want to achieve, so it's been a fantastic time. And so Celia, in your acknowledgement, you stated about Peggy and so she's my wife and together we've enjoyed doing a lot of things to help people with diabetes and we couldn't, I couldn't have done what I've done without her, so I think that's great, so thank you.
Thank you. Now you've just moved the second one. So can somebody, you've just moved the second one as well? Somebody's just removed my second nomination, thank you very much. Too tidy. Thank you. And knowing Helen, she wouldn't be averse to us doing some recycling while we're here. This is an absolutely positively Wellingtonian award citation for Helen Kettles. It's my pleasure to present an absolutely positively Wellingtonian award to Helen for her voluntary work with the Wellington South Coast Cleanup Group. The South Coast Cleanup Group get together annually to do a coastal spring clean. This year's event took place in September and Helen coordinated over 300 participants 11 different spots. Over 100 bags of rubbish were collected and the good news is that was a little less than previously, from 12 kilometres of coast. Cleanup teams included scuba divers, conservationists, coast groups, as well as volunteers from Niwa, Victoria and local schools. Helen's efforts to promote the cleanup, motivate and organise volunteers and get stuck into cleaning up the coast are much appreciated by Wellingtonians as well as terrestrial and marine wildlife. In the past, cleanup events have yielded some unusual items, including keys, dolls, car seats and toy dinosaurs. Wellington City Council would like to thank Helen and her dedicated team of volunteers for getting these things and otherwise non-biodegradable material off the beaches. On behalf of the Wellington City Council, I'd like to. An absolutely positively Wellingtonian. Helen, would you like to come up? Tenakoto, tenakoto, tenakoto katoa.
Kia ora koto, it's really nice to be here and have this work acknowledged. I love living in Wellington and I especially love the south coast and it's, it's amazing to think that six years ago, I just had this sort of idea, wouldn't it be great if all these community groups who also love the south coast all got together on one day and cleaned up the whole, whole of that coastline? And a lot of these groups do that work regularly during the year and so I thought to have an event where we could do that and have a barbecue and celebrate that work collectively and meet each other. And so the first year took quite a bit of organising, cobbling it together and it's amazing. I think the strength, new friendships are formed and great sort of community feel. It's a really festive, festive occasion and we're very proud. As Celia said, there's lots of different types of people that get together to do this, so it really is about community. It's really satisfying work and I think we all get a lot of great pleasure from it. It's great to have two of the site hosts here today in the room next door and also my mum and another friend of mine Sonia and thank you so much council for this recognition.
Thank you. I'd now like to call our members present to declare any conflicts of interest that they may have in relation to the items on the agenda. So we'll move to the next item. Confirmation of minutes. I would like to move that council approves the minutes of the 30th of September 2015, which have been circulated. Thank you councillor Ahopeni Mercer. Please, could we vote on the minutes? Those in favour?
Aye.
I declare those carried. It's working, great. I would now like to move 1.6, items not on the agenda and the item 2.3, submission on block offered 2016, can't be delayed because the submission closed on 30th of October and this item will be discussed under item 2.3. This is a procedural motion as to whether to accept the item onto the agenda or not. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Panet, please vote on whether it should go on the agenda, not whether you agree with it or not. All those in favour? Anyone against? So I declare that carried, so that will go on the agenda at item 2.3. We now move to public participation. I have got eight different individuals or groups making public participation. If they are an individual, our standing orders say five minutes maximum, if they are a group, it's 10 minutes. So if you see the differences in times, that's why that is. So I will just run through who's here, I think you've been told what order you're speaking in, but just to make sure you're all comfortable, got Reverend Brian Dawson, Prue Hyman, John Milford, Fiona Mulder, Chris Wilkinson, John Albertson, Tiso Panapa and Peter Cranny. So if we could start with Reverend Brian Dawson.
Kia ora koto, Mia Celia, Deputy Mia Justin, councillors, as you know, my name is Brian Dawson, I'm here on behalf of both St Peter's Anglican Church in Willis Street and Living Wage Wellington and I've brought a few friends with me, most of whom are in the other room out there, hopefully not causing too much mayhem. I want to speak to you about the security contract, you'll be shocked to know that, I'm sure. I'm here and we are here to encourage and support you as you continue to make good on the promises many of you made in the run-up to the last local body election, which was to do everything you could to ensure the living wage was rolled out to all council workers, directly employed CCOs and contractors in this council term. And we've come a long way in the last couple of years and thanks to you, a lot of lives have been changed for the better already and today is another step in that process and our message is simply, don't stop now. Not everyone agrees with us and we acknowledge that. The report you've received from your own offices advises against including a living wage requirement in this contract and that's been echoed by a few others and I mean a few others. I do want to point out that in the long-term plan process, you receive literally hundreds of submissions in favour of including the living wage for contractors in council, in contrast to a handful, if that, against. You have the majority of Wellingtonians behind you in this, of that we are confident, so don't let the minority put you off. Others will focus on the legal and economic issues in front of you, but ultimately what we're talking about here is still, as it always has been, simply doing the right thing. Only last week, we heard the report from the coroner's inquest into the death of Sharon Preet Daliwale, a security guard beaten to death on his very first day on the job. That coroner's report noted that this wasn't the first death of a security guard and nor were serious assaults at all uncommon. These women and men do a potentially dangerous and unpleasant job for what we know is minimum wage or very close to it. And I would honestly ask those who prepared the report you're receiving today, whether any of them would put their safety on the line for $15 an hour? Indeed, would they do the job they do now for $15 an hour? There is an option of course for how to fund this. Everyone can go on the living wage and then I don't think you'll have any problem at all of funding the rest of them. Can I ask you to give serious thought to whether it is worth stopping at this point in the process? I really don't think you need to. We are behind you, the majority of Wellingtonians are behind you and the right thing is behind you. We are grateful for your commitment and your courage thus far, so let's just keep going. Thank you.
Public here could not clap or otherwise, either for the people speaking in public or for the elected members, that would just keep things neutral and correct. Thank you. So if I could now call upon Prue Hyman.
Tenakoto katoa. I've been an associate professor of economics at Victoria University of Wellington with a specialisation in labour market issues and as will be clear from my little badge, I am in support of the living wage movement. I support everything Brian Dawson has said and I wish to focus on some of the economic arguments. I argue strongly in favour of the living wage being paid wherever possible, both for equity and for economic efficiency reasons. With respect to the economic case, sophisticated models and empirical evidence both point to benefits in terms of productivity improvement from paying a living wage, as well as yielding a much happier workforce with lower turnover. The recommendation in the paper before you and agree to pay security contractors a living wage to have a contract which includes that provision, Wellington will benefit greatly from being seen as a progressive city, with Wellington City Council being the first council to implement the living wage to contractors as well as its own employees. The circular flow of expenditure that arises from lower paid workers spending their extra income is highly relevant to the claims you have and will hear from the retailers, that extra expenditure by the council from rates is at the expense of consumers and hence imperils retail profits. I argue on the contrary, that the workers who benefit spend a much higher proportion of their income than for example higher paid workers do and retailers simply reclaim as much or more from their spending as they might think they lose from an initial small extra on the rates, if it has to be such, which I also argue isn't necessary anyway, it can be dealt with by savings elsewhere. So turning to affordability, the council's long-term plan points out that it is in an excellent, strong financial position that means that it can invest for growth. It has a double A credit rating with far less debt than most metropolitan local authorities. This demonstrates excellent budgeting and care for council, for which we can be very pleased, but helps also show that a living wage extension is affordable. On the amount of money involved, I find it rather unfortunate that there are no calculations given in the public paper at least, to demonstrate the estimated cost of 2.4 million in that paper across the life of the contract of seven years, an average of 350,000 a year, starting lower and going higher as the period goes on. It's extremely hard to see how the cost could be that high and it would have been good if the calculation had been in the public paper. The living wage campaign has attempted to do its own estimates, which are a great deal lower. It may be that the officers have simply taken the estimate from the preferred supplier of a 90% increase in the contract price that they would need in order to pay a living wage, although the percentage increase in the paper is even higher than this and quite what the counterfactual it is, is that they compare it against is completely uncertain. It seems to me to be an incredibly high figure, the 2.4 million, to be alarmist and misleading. And of course, 250,000 has already been set aside towards the costs in the budget for the current year and half a million for the following year. It will cost something out front, but nothing like, I argue, the amount that is stated in the paper. Further, the 90% estimated increase in the contract price, which may have been part of what the people that wrote the paper. of what the people that wrote the paper built in, should also be questioned and subject to perhaps to negotiation downwards. It seems reasonable that some of the direct costs should be paid by council and some by the contractor themselves, because the supplier themselves rightly expect improvements in their workforce from paying a living wage, including reduced turnover and training costs, higher quality output and reduced absenteeism. Hence, it is reasonable that they should absorb some of the gross costs of paying a living wage themselves, as they'll obtain a return. And there is a hint in the paper that some negotiation further could take place. Incidentally, these improvements, which are outlined by the preferred supplier, are apparently regarded as pretty insignificant by the official's paper, who demand chapter and verse and calculations, which are quite impossible to quantify in advance. But there is a great deal of international evidence on these benefits in quantitative terms after a living wage is implemented, and there is no reason to expect this to be any different in this case. In addition, the base budget for the contract, we note, has 8% savings on the current contract. This is very interesting and quite impressive. I don't know-
Excuse me, Ms. Hyman, if you could, we are at the end of your five minutes, but I think you're near the end of the-
I'm very near the end, I'll wind up. But again, this means that paying the living wage is affordable, and certainly, the WCC savings target should not be achieved at the expense of its lower-paid contracted workers. I'll finish by pointing out that the Dominion Post today has an excellent article by Max Rashbrook, showing how small the living wage costs are compared with the increases in top salaries at WCC. I won't today attack top earnings, although I could do so on economic grounds and equity ones. I'll simply point out that top earners don't spend all their income and increase the circular flow as low earners do. Overall, I argue that the official's conclusions are based on highly one-sided analysis and are totally unjustified. Thank you.
Thank you, Prue. I've now got John Milford, Chamber of Commerce.
Mayor Wade Brown, councillors, thank you for the opportunity to read this brief statement. This is the fourth time we have now appeared in person before council in relation to this matter. Each time we've been consistent. The chamber has been opposed, from both a business and cost point of view, to the council's decision to pay the living wage to its direct employees. As an organisation that represents business, who pay 47% of the total rate take, we question whether the adoption of the living wage is a prudent business decision. The decision before you tonight is whether you require a third-party contractor, who is a privately owned business, to remit their own employees at a higher hourly wage. You will have seen the chamber's comments last week, urging you once again to reconsider this proposal, after your own legal advice says changes would not be within the law. And I quote from that advice, "The council is at risk of being found to have acted outside of the purpose of local government as set out by sections 10 and 11 of the Local Government Act." End of quote. The council advice goes on to say that changes would be unlawful because, and I quote again, "the increased cost that arises as a consequence of living wage should allow for a corresponding increase in the quality of effectiveness of a particular service being supplied." Sorry, provided. And again, quote, "In this case, it is considered that the required supplier too, to implement a living wage, cannot be justified in the terms of improved quality and/or of effectiveness." End of quote. For this one security contract alone, officers advise that the quote, requiring the living wage to be paid, would create a significant cost council. And, again, quote, "The increase is estimated to be more than $2.4 million across the life of the contract of seven years, and the cost to council is likely to be approximately 19% increase on the total contract price." End of quote. I note that even with the 19% increase, there is no expectation that council or rate payers will receive better services or better deal from the security provider. To illustrate the perverse, illogical and unfair outcomes that could flow from such a policy, I note this is a shared service contract with Poreira and Capiti. The suggestion is that the security company pays different wage rates for the different locations to the same staff for the same job. This is using public money to pay a third party for the same contract, for the same service, for the same outcomes, with no extra value added to rate payers or council for this extra cost. We would expect you to make a decision without establishing and judging the benefits. We, sorry, I beg your pardon, we wouldn't expect you to make a decision without establishing and judging the benefits. There are ways to measure and judge these significant financial decisions, and as a chamber, we have always said, a robust business case, a convincing cost-benefit analysis, and a clear return on investment. The Wellington Chamber urges you to heed your own officers' clear legal advice. The council has a duty to rate payers to deliver services in a way that is the most cost-effective for households and businesses. We believe this is a clear obligation under the Local Government Act. Requiring third-party contractors to implement a higher wage not only puts Wellington jobs and businesses at risk, it goes beyond the council's authority. In this case, we would expect that this security contract delivers greater value and quantifiable extra benefits to rate payers. Wage increases should be about performance and productivity. This is not what the living wage is based on. Real wage increases cannot be created by the stroke of a pen. Central government has a process for setting a fair and transparent minimum wage annually, and the New Zealand government minimum wage is currently the fifth highest in the OECD countries. At this time, I think I've said enough. We would urge you to heed your own officers' clear advice, and as someone said earlier, and to do the right thing by the rate payers. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And I would now like, apparently both Fiona and Chris are from the same organisation, so they are going to share their 10 minutes. Over to you as to how you do that.
So my name's Chris Wilkinson. I'm with a group called First Retail Group. Here we work with retailers throughout Wellington and throughout New Zealand, and we've collaborated with Retail New Zealand to develop a submission on this case. So this is Fiona Mulder. She is Public Affairs Advisor for Retail New Zealand.
That's right, thank you. So as you will expect, we're appearing on behalf of Retail New Zealand to make a submission on item 2.2, which the other senators have also discussed this evening. Retail New Zealand represents the interests of our retail members throughout Wellington City, the wider region and the country as a whole. While our organisation does not represent members on every individual local government issue that affect them, though would like to, a number of our members have approached us directly with concerns about this Wellington City council proposal. We are also concerned about the precedent this decision may set for other local councils, and about the flow and effects it will have outside Wellington City and for the whole of New Zealand, which is why we appear before you today. I want to start by saying that our organisation strongly supports the payment of wages which are sustainable. Many of our members pay more than the statutory minimum wage where feasible, and some are working towards the introduction of a living wage where this is sustainable and realistic. Wage growth has to be met through increases in productivity. However, we do not believe that it is in the interest of Wellington retailers or rate payers at large to pay more for security services than the going rate, as determined through a proper procurement process, particularly where there is no evidence that the council or rate payers will receive better services as a result. Adopting a requirement to pay a minimum $18.40 will have significant costs for Wellington rate payers, estimated to be in the order of $2.4 million over the life of the contract, or a 19% increase on the contract price. This figure does not include the costs of future tenders for other services such as cleaning, waste management or construction, if such a precedent was set today. The increased costs will have to be met from rates revenue. While the cost may seem small when calculated on a per-rate payer basis, that can be said for all council spending. It is your job as councillors to ensure good quality and efficient public services are provided in a cost-effective way. The Local Government Act prescribes that every spending proposal must be examined through this lens. What effect will rates increase have on retailers? Any future rates increase will suck money out of the local economy and mean that consumers have less money in their pocket to spend. Even if some of the rates increases recycled into higher wages for contractors, we expect there will still be a significant deadweight loss owing to the council in reallocating this money. If consumers have less money in their pockets, they will be able to afford less retail spending, thus making it even harder for small retailers to survive. Increased rates lead to increased rents, which have direct flow and effect to retailers. Retailers are a vulnerable sector nationwide, and retailers in Wellington are already struggling with increasing rents in the CBD. These increase in costs have been coupled with competition from offshore online retailers in a highly competitive domestic marketplace. Any further increases will make it even harder for small retailers, which are what makes our CBD a unique destination, very difficult to survive. We are also concerned that artificially inflating the wages of council contractors will make it harder for small businesses to attract staff within Wellington, particularly when it is often not possible for the retailer to simply increase wages to meet market demand. The minimum wage is set at the appropriate level by central government and reviewed annually. We note that the living wage of $18.40 an hour is calculated for household units of two adults and two children, with one adult working full-time and the other half-time. It is unlikely that all employees are living in such arrangements, and it doesn't make sense to impose a blanket rule on all council contractors' staff, contractors' staff, I should say. The combined effect of higher wages and higher rates in Wellington will have consequences. Higher costs for Wellington retailers may have the unintended effect of seeing businesses close up their physical shops, either for good or to move to an online-only model. All businesses may relocate to other parts of the region where costs are lower. Our members cannot simply pass costs on to consumers. Consumers will simply choose to shop elsewhere if costs increase. To conclude, the living wage should only be paid where it's sustainable and viable to do so. Raising rates and increasing contractor wages will make small retail businesses less viable and less able to pay sustainable wages to themselves and to their staff. Even if imposing the $18.40 rate on council contractors' staff could be done in a fiscally neutral situation with no rates rise, Wellington rate payers would still be paying more than other rate payers in the region for the same service, with no extra value added for the extra cost. We would prefer to see rates lowered if efficiencies could be found. We support your council officers' recommendation that you do not require the $18.40 wage rate to be paid by your council contractors, and thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much. I'd now like to invite John Alberton from our CBD to address council. Is John here? It appear not. I was pretty generous, a number of the requests for public participation did sneak in after that 12 noon on the working day before, but given we all had Labour Weekend, I was pretty generous about if anyone asked, they were pretty much allowed. So I'd like to ask Tiso Panapa to come and speak to us. From up here?
Talofalava and greetings. My name is Tiso Panapa and I'm 33 years old. For the last seven years, I've been working in the security industry as a security guard in central Wellington. The work is hard, it can be risky and it can be tough. It's a tough job. I get spared it. People do a lot of funny gestures. And I get threats all the time. I need to be physically fit and alert. This is a job for a person prepared to take on responsibility. But even though this is a tough job, it is very low-paid. I am paid the legal minimum wage of $14.75 an hour. Now, this is too low to have a decent life. Now, I look after my father, who is paraplegic. One of the things that we like to do, my father and I, is to buy fish and chips and to go to La O Bay. And all we do is just look out into the beaches. And he said to me, just as a joke, "Wouldn't it be nice if we could do this weekly?" And I believe with the living wage, my father's request can be done, can be fulfilled. There are many other security guards that have families to take care of, sorry, to take care for. They struggle to get by, especially in the big city. And life is tough. I already work very hard, but if I was paid a living wage, I could be proud that my work was valued. I know receiving the living wage will make the security workers feel more valued and will spur them on to do an even better job. I support the council's security guards and the living wage campaigners, who want Wellington to be a fairer city. Please show that you want your security workforce to be valued for the work they do, keeping the city safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much, talofalava. I'd now like to call on Peter Cranny to address council.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. The most important phrase that was said, I think, in the last few minutes is the phrase "too low to have a decent life." And that is really what we're here talking about. I don't accept for a moment, I want to first of all deal with the submission made by the retailers. I don't for a moment accept the analysis they have put forward. Retail New Zealand is largely controlled by major corporate entities such as the warehouse and the large retailing companies. They fund most of it. The resistance to a living wage from many of those entities, and some of them have been dragged into it, is largely based on the fact that they do not want to pay it to their own staff. It's not about rates. It's about this cancer of dignity, this cancer of equality, and this cancer of human freedom, which is arising all around them. This is becoming a movement. It is no surprise that this argument has begun to raise its head in city councils. There is a long history of this. There's an old act called the 1908 Local Bodies Contractors Act, which imposed on city councils exactly the type of obligation that we're talking about today. Equal pay was led by government first. And for the submission made by the Chamber of Commerce, which was that this is a matter for central government, central government has already addressed these types of issues. Central government has imposed on all state entities the obligation to be a good employer, and central government has adopted procurement rules and procurement procedures which include a requirement to be ethical. And I want to read one of them. One of the central government's five principles, or part of the fourth principle, is to make balanced decisions and to consider social, environmental and economic effects of the deal. And I want to go through that. Social, environmental and economic effects of the deal. That's the current government procurement ethical rules. And when we talk about social consequences, I want to come back to what the security guard actually said. He said the wage is too low to have a decent life. Then we come to the paper that we have been given by the officers, which is more notable for the obscurity of it, rather than the facts that it discloses, about this particular deal. And we go and have a look at section 10. And the paper says that if the council adopts this provision, they are at risk of being taken to the High Court. I would like to say to you, Madam Mayor, every decision you make, you're at risk of being taken to the High Court. That's the nature of the High Court. And Madam Mayor, if you get put in jail for paying the living wage to these people, I will be there in the next cell with you, if not trying to get you out. Now, this section 10 requires that the council act in a way which is most cost-effective. That just means that you don't waste money. It means you get value for your dollar. And you say to the contractor, "If I'm paying $20 or $19 an hour, I expect, because I'm the contracting party, that you give work and services commensurate with-" with that amount. And this argument which is raised by the officers, and my respectful submission is only an excuse, it's an excuse not to pay it. They are quite capable, I think, of making a recommendation to this council which resolves the issue of the security guard that just spoke. And they are capable of making a recommendation which requires in a cost-effective way, and I would go further and say a recommendation in the most cost-effective way for households and businesses, to restore dignity to the gentleman that just spoke. And that is what I think that we should do. And I just want to finish on this note because I don't want to go over my time. The man from the Chamber of Commerce who said how ridiculous it would be for a security guard to come into Wellington and be paid a living wage, while he was in Pori Rua, he's on a lower rate. Why is that ridiculous? The ridiculous thing is that he's on a lower rate in Pori Rua, not that he's on a living wage here. And I think we've got to get our thinking straight. Look at the phrase that we're using, a living wage. A wage that a worker, while remaining poor, can actually live on. And I think there's an opportunity here for this council to become a beacon. And that's what some of these people are worried about, is politics. And it's time we fronted up and addressed this issue.
Mr. Cranny, that brings us to the end of our public participation and I would like to congratulate everybody for hearing each other's views in such a calm way. We do have, our first item of general business is not the matter of the living wage, it is a matter of the Te Awurua or Pori Rua Faitua Committee Reappointment. This is an important committee. Councillor Sparrow has found that he has had a number of clashes. I am moving that we receive the information, we note the terms of reference and delegations, and agree to replace Councillor Sparrow. And I would like a seconder. Councillor Sparrow, would you like to second it to make sure that you're, that you're happy with this? Thank you. And once, so would you like to speak, Councillor Sparrow? Stand up, Madam Counsel.
Okay, sorry to bring this up, but it's just come to my attention that the word "Faitua" in the very last line is not spelt correctly, that's all I have to say. Thank you. It has an extra "i".
Councillor Sparrow, you have an "i" for detail. Yes. Now Councillor Eagle has the eagle eyes. So what are we going to do unless anyone wishes to debate this? We will vote on those recommendations and then I will call for nominations and then we will vote on one or many nominations. So please would you vote on recommendations one, two and three? Those in favour? Aye. Those against? I declare those carried. So I now call for nominations for this position. Do I have any nominations? Councillor Leicester? Thank you. Moved and nominated. Do we have any other nominations? Then I would like us to vote on recommendation four. Sorry, Councillor Eagle, you didn't want to nominate anyone? No?
No.
Just checking, just trying to remember you're there. Agreed to, so I'm going to now, we've got Councillor Leicester moved, Councillor Sparrow moved, seconded, who seconded? Councillor Sparrow seconded that we agreed to appoint Councillor David Lee as the Wellington City Appointee. Those in favour? Anyone against? I declare that carried. Congratulations, Councillor Lee. And the spelling will be corrected, no doubt. So we now move to the item that is of some significant interest tonight, item two point two. What I'm going to do, I know a number of you were able to be at the workshop and ask some staff some questions. I'm going to ask the Chief Executive Kevin Lavery to make some introductory remarks and then I will move pro forma the recommendations. Counselor?
Well, I just like, I just was requesting suspending standing orders to ask questions of the officers since I come straight to counsel.
I think as long as we're reasonably timely, I will allow each of you one question. There was an opportunity and the meeting yesterday was in everybody's diaries as a general workshop. So some of you may not have accepted it originally, but it was sent out as a general invitation many months ago. Chief?
I would like to-
I'm going to hear from Kevin Lavery and then you can ask questions.
It's not a question, it's in relation to the public excluded matter. I note that commercials-
Were we not at that paper?
It is in relation to this paper. And I would like to move that the public excluded paper is not public excluded.
Councillor Ritchie-
Now I know we're going to come to it later, but we need to-
You're welcome to move to vote that way when we come to that item. I have not had any proposition to take differently.
We should consider both together.
Thank you, Counsel. I'm sure we will be able to in our own minds. Counsel- Chief Executive?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah.
We have to, you have to.
Yeah, yeah. Not used to it, councillors, good evening. It's a privilege to be your CEO, this is a very special city. My job has many highlights. One of my favourite pastimes at council is to go and visit frontline staff and in recent weeks that's included a range of facilities like the Botanic Gardens and City Archives. My job also has some lowlights, too. You can't have everything and one of my more difficult jobs is very occasionally having to tell you not what you want to hear but what you need to hear and this is one of those moments. I have consistently had concerns over the adoption of the living wage, but please don't read that as a lack of concern over the very real problem of low pay. Last year, two lifeguards in Kilburny Sports Centre valiantly tried to save the life of an elderly swimmer who had a heart attack in the water. Sadly, the lady died, but the actions of the lifeguards were praised by the coroner. They did everything they possibly could have done to save her life, but their actions were in vain. Lifeguards have a vital public safety role and sometimes they make the difference between life and death. These are really important jobs, arguably more important than mine or indeed yours. It did not make me feel proud to discover that those two lifeguards were on the minimum wage. This was not our finest moment as a city council. You know that officers have had reservations about the living wage. I will not go through those here as they have been well aired before. Notwithstanding these reservations, your officers found a way to adopt the living wage, first for council staff and now for council-controlled organisation staff, too. We- We find a way to implement that in a lawful way. Our solution was to apply the living wage for workforce reasons only, based on training and enhanced productivity. I have to be clear, it was for workforce reasons not to promote the wider agenda of social equality, that that would be potentially unlawful for a council. We are the only council in New Zealand to adopt the living wage and we are way ahead of any other public sector organisation in the country. It does make me a little nervous to be at the bleeding edge and so far ahead of everyone else. You too should be nervous. As officers, we have been clear and straight with you, but we have always respected your right to make a decision and direct us and we have been flexible and creative in finding a solution that does that in a way that has low risk of legal challenge. I hope that our can-do approach will be taken into account when you consider our advice on applying the living wage to the security contract. I know that many of you will not be comfortable with this advice, but just as I respect your right to make the final decision and direct me, you need to acknowledge my right and duty to give you professional advice without fear or favour. I've consistently said that applying the living wage to contractors would be difficult. Each case will be different due to the nature of the work, the marketplace and our ability or not to bring work in-house. That's why I decided to refer the decision on applying the living wage to individual contracts back to you, the council. This is because you are directing me to implement something I have major reservations about. It is therefore right and proper that you take responsibility for those decisions. My decision to make the legal advice public was not taken lightly. It is an unusual step, but it has happened before. The advice is very clear-cut, there is a serious risk of losing a legal challenge. This is the complete opposite of adopting the living wage for council and CCO staff. Moreover, I am aware that there is contrary advice in the public domain that may lead you to conclude that the risks are lower than they really are. Unlike the advice in the public domain, the legal advice before you is very specific. It is not about contractors generically or generalised savings costs and productivity levels. It is about Wellington City Council's security tender in two thousand and fifteen in New Zealand based on the actual prices and service levels offered by the preferred supplier following a rigorous procurement process. But there is another, more important reason for making the advice public. If in your wisdom you decide to direct me to implement the living wage for the security contract, you are putting me in a rather difficult position as your CEO. In essence, you are asking- -leave is potentially unlawful. Moreover, we can expect someone to seek a judicial review should you adopt the living wage for the security contract, there's a real risk of that. I would have a problem directing one of my employees to implement something I know to be potentially unlawful. That's because I have a duty as a good employer and I take it seriously. You have that same duty to me as your CEO. This changes the issue a little from the living wage to your duties as a good employer to me and I have taken advice about my position here. As CEO, I take my responsibilities very seriously so that my staff and myself operate with a safe environment and within the law. Like you, I am bound by the Local Government Act and my contract of employment with you states that I have to act within the law. The strong legal opinion before you is merely an opinion, it is not the law. I do think there is a need for a sensible compromise, at least to wait for the outcome of any legal action, should that be forthcoming, before implementing a direction. Alternatively, you may wish to direct me to the High Court to secure a declaratory judgment on this issue. A further alternative is to have an implementation date that gives me the time to clear these legal hurdles. These are matters I have raised with the mayor. They are, they represent a reasonable approach. This follows the spirit of your direction, it protects the council's interests and it is the correct path for me personally. So my advice is simple, adopting the living wage for the security contract is a step too far. There is compelling evidence that you would potentially fail to meet your fiduciary duty to the ratepayer. There is a risk that you would be acting beyond your powers. You would be purchasing the service for nineteen percent more without a corresponding improvement in service levels or productivity. You could also set a precedent for other contracts that could cost the city many, many dollars. You would also arguably be failing in your duty to me as a good employer and there is reputational risk too. So in, in conclusion, I stand here reluctantly, this is not a situation I enjoy at all, but it is a very serious and loud alarm bell. My advice is take heed of the officer advice, be responsible and support the officer recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Lavery. That's very clear and as usual, we will take that into consideration when we come to our decisions. I have asked the staff to distribute a process because I shall be moving the officer recommendations pro forma, but there will also be the opportunity for elected members to remove recommendation two and then move an amendment. So I've distributed this with just councillors A, B, C, D and E, rather than assigning names in advance. However, I know that many of you have been discussing these matters. I would like to take, if people have honestly not had the opportunity to email or speak to a staff member about these, this paper, you may now take the opportunity to have one question each. So, Councillor Coghlan, you wished to have a question?
Yeah, I would like to ask a question and just to be clear, I was here yesterday, so just felt that needed to be pointed out.
Could you please stand up, Madam Counsel? Mad Chief Executive, stand up. Question.
So the question is, if the living wage was applied across all council contracts going forward for goods and services, what, you know, what is the, what is the sort of value that we're looking at that that could equate to? Can you give us some sort of spectrum of cost that we could be looking to incur if we, on a case-by-case basis, agreed that we would implement the living wage in this way?
I think it's very difficult to answer that, it will vary from case to case because the salaries paid will vary. But to put it in perspective, we spend four hundred and twenty, five hundred and twenty million dollars a year as an organisation, about eighty million dollars of that is spent on wages. The rest of that money is spent on a variety of goods and services. But the cases will be different from case to case, that's why we recommend a dealing with it in that way.
Thank you. And councillor, we agreed to deal with contracts on a case-by-case basis, this does not necessarily set precedent. Councillor Free, Councillor Ritchie?
This is a question for the CFO. Miss Hyman said that she found the figures maybe were not correct and I just wonder if you could make some comment as to, I think there were some recalculations done yesterday. In respect to the two point four million that's been quoted for the extra amount over seven years of that contract?
Through you, Madam Mayor, this is, this question was also raised by the EDPs today and councillors, we hear that some additional information was included to, you know, last evening, to provide detail on that. Obviously, the, the type of numbers, the service and breakdown of the, of the, of the section of paper, but we can't go as far to say is that the, is that the two point four million dollars quoted does include the, the inflation, rate increase, inflation factor in the contract? So the-
Thank you, Councillor Ritchie.
Thank you. I think this is a question to the Chief Executive and it is a question about the possibility of in-house, on page seventeen, paragraph eleven, there is reference to the fact apparently that in-house security was considered. Was that an in-depth consideration or was it, as it appears here, and I don't, you know, a superficial examination of that possibility? One of the, one of the issues that is highlighted is the service complexity. Well, this, you know, authority deals with a lot of service complexity. Another is cost, but there's no thorough examination. Can you please tell me what kind of in-depth analysis was done, please?
Yes, it was an in-depth analysis. The basic issue here is the service is, if you like, in peaks and troughs, it's not standard. So if you provide it in-house, you have to staff near the peak of demand rather than the trough of demand. And the second issue is there are a lot of specialist services as well, which again, if you were providing them just in Wellington in an in-house operation, you would have to staff up to provide those specialties. When you have a partner who operates over a much bigger area with many more organisations, they're able to provide-
of course, we do that generally.
Councillors, councillor Eagle, did you wish to have a question?
No, thank you. You're welcome.
Right. Were there other councillors? Councillor Pannett?
This is a question for the chief executive. Kevin, I just would like a response from you about the consistency between the way that we treat different people. So when we talked about bringing the parking people in-house, it was all about we needed to pay them properly so we would have better workforce retention, higher motivated staff. And yet when we talk about security, apparently that isn't a relevant consideration. So could, I'll just have a response on that, please.
I'm not the lawyer, but the paper does make clear that the grounds are more restricted in terms of external contractors compared to in-house operations. We've been, we're very proud of the, where the security, the parking services contract has been working generally, and we're very pleased. But one of the key things there, we went through that very analysis that I raised with, in relation to councillor Ritchie's question, to see whether it could be better done in-house. We deliver that service in a very different way. We're providing a lot of new technology services. We're now pioneering sensor operations, et cetera, et cetera. So, and, and the living wage was very much part of that overall process and it's working well. But that's something on its merits, and one of the questions you do ask is could we do it better in-house? But the law is different for in-house operations compared to other parts, outsourcing arrangements.
Thank you very much. The last question, councillor Leicester, deputy mayor.
You're mayor of the mayor. Just to clarify to Chief Financial Officer, so Andy, that figure on page sixteen, which refers to two point four million, is actually one point seven million over the seven years cost of the contract, not two point four?
If you were looking
Through you, Madam Mayor.
Do need to use their microphones because there are people in the other room as well as on the web trying to hear what we're saying.
Through you, Madam Mayor. If you were only looking at the, at the sole cost of the living wage itself rather than including the inflation value of the base contract, that's correct.
But without, with or without the living wage, if we had the base level of any staff employee, it always factor in inflation. So is that correct?
That's correct.
So therefore can't be treated one in the same.
Thank you, councillor. Please don't debate with the staff.
Clarification, Madam Mayor. With regards to the CPI increases, have they been factored in? Do they correspond with the CPI adjustments we've seen since 2015? So the 2015 adjustments we've had, for example, being point eight per cent, and yet CPI increases applied incrementally to get to that figure significantly higher, as much as three times? Why, why the difference?
So the way, through you, Madam Mayor, the way that that's been calculated, councillor, is, is by the, the starting number in year one is a base number, the inflation rates that have been applied subsequent to that are as per our long-term plan, as we have done for any other of our costs that we've currently got forecasted in our long-term plan.
But just to clarify.
So I have just asked people to have one question, so.
One final question then to the chief executive.
I think councillor, I think, I'm sure you will be able to raise the point when we come to debate. So. Right. Well, first of all, I would like to thank staff and advisers and people from the community or the different sectors for their input into this important matter. We have had clear advice from a number of people, and it tells us different things. Well, what's new in politics and allocation of resources? I would like to say first of all that in most respects, I hugely value the advice of our chief executive in terms of how we can most cost-effectively increase the success of the business and economy of Wellington. I'm not sure that we have had precise measurements of the cost effectiveness of the film museum, CBD-free wifi, the Christmas celebrations, the New Year's Eve celebrations, the world of wearable art, we have economic returns. We don't know whether there might not be some slightly more cost-effective way of doing one of those. All of those contribute hugely and successfully to the economy, growth and jobs of this We're looking at even doing some new things, like lower bus fares in the December period, having events in Midland Park and so forth. I didn't heard a lot about whether that is precisely the most cost-effective mechanism for doing so. So cost effectiveness is important, but it is not a precise scientific art. I also would like to think about the people that have come in-house, and yes, that is slightly different to a contractor, the people who have come in-house as our local hosts. I've met them recently through the fourteen hours homelessness challenge, for example. The work they do now is hugely more ambassadorial, constructive and a great face for this city. I'd actually say there's an awful lot of people out there who have still no idea that they are our employees, but they do know that they've smartened up their act. But we're not here to argue whether increasing somebody's wages gets more spent in the local economy or not. There's lots of interesting arguments from retailers and from economists as to whether that's the case or not. I haven't got a timer on. I don't think you want to give me infinity time, even as mayor. See, I do try and apply standing orders to myself as well. Don't forget, I have ten minutes to introduce the paper, and we would have had some of that time already. What I do want to do is look at the kind of work that's involved in the security services. And you've got this here. Yes, there's the control room and there's the cash collection, but there's also mobile guarding, random and scheduled patrols through council-owned properties and locations, event guarding, noise control and regulatory services. Noise control is one of the most contentious and delicate issues that we actually have to deal with. Do we want people who help the reputation of our council or not in some of those roles? Now, I agree that the written arguments from supplier number two could be stronger. So I look forward to those KPIs being strengthened before we finish our debate today. But the evidence isn't, we may be the only council in this country, but we will soon be followed by others. We are not the only city in the world that chooses to pay its staff and, in some cases, contractors, some form of wage above the legal minimum wage. There is considerable evidence that people are the same all the world over, they are the same whether they are contractors or employees, that they actually respond to being valued. This is not a blanket decision. We already know that any contract where NZTA subsidises us cannot be a candidate for paying the living wage. There may be some shared services, and let's be quite clear, we asked our chief executive and staff to pursue shared services so we can work together more effectively regionally so that we can deliver more cost-effective services for the citizens, ratepayers and visitors of Wellington. So there may be some times when they come back to us and say, actually, we can't divvy it up. We have the same people working across the whole of the region, we can't do this for you. But supplier two has said they can. And I've been very clear that kapiti and porirua's costs will not be affected, but they presumably will not be receiving any benefits either. Considering legal advice is always part of our job, and some of our legal advice has proved successful in various courts and some has not proved successful in various courts. Some are more challenging decisions than others, and again, this is an area of local government law that has not been tested as fully as the RMA. So I commend our chief executive for his caution and ensuring that his advice is clear and he is covered by having made that advice very clear to then in detailing how the living wage may be paid to contractors. He may decide that there must be some clause that says that there may be some way to stop. But I don't think that that is our job today. Our job is to continue with a commitment and a direction when we said we would take all possible steps to take a staged approach to the living wage, extend it to our CCOs, which we have done for the zoo and museums trust, and then to contractors on a case-by-case basis. There is also an argument that our starting point living wage is not the same as what is the current living wage arteora rate. We have always said we are taking a staged approach. We have also said we don't want to contract out the setting of wages in this council. What we do want to do is take note of how it is being calculated, and we may well look at the level and whether it has adequately increased during our annual plan process. Again, that is not the subject of the debate today. The debate will be about whether we agree with the officers' recommendations or not. So I've moved those pro forma, seconded by councillor Peck. Do you wish to speak? Councillor Pannett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'd now like to move an amendment that we agree to remove recommendation two. And look, I'd first like to actually start off by saying thank you to the living wage movement and to all of those people who work in low-wage jobs to support the rest of the community. I'm proud to have been part of a council that has been a leader in this area. And I think the, the official advice is of concern because we're not adopting a blanket policy here. What we're doing is looking at a particular contract and seeing whether it has merit. The key argument here essentially is whether by paying the living wage, we will end up with higher quality and more effective services. And my argument is that that is exactly what we are doing. And in fact, not only do we need to be paying a living wage, we need to be paying a fair wage because the reality is, is that we're underpaying these people. And when you underpay people, you don't actually get the best result that you can from them. When you, when you hire someone for fourteen or fifteen dollars an hour, you are saying that they are not very valuable, that they are at the bottom of the pecking order and that their work is of far less value than a scientist or a chief executive or a lawyer or a politician or whatever, and that these people must live in a degree of poverty. And I do not find that an acceptable message. For those that are given that message, it is a real struggle to be motivated, to be disciplined, to be committed to an organisation which says that we do not value your work. And as we heard yesterday, the refugee hui, it is very, very difficult to be motivated, focused and committed when you're working ninety hours a week just to survive. People in low-wage jobs often have very, very stressful lives. It's very, very hard to be at the beck and call and on low wages to people who do not appreciate your work. I would challenge any of you who do not agree with this to live on fourteen or fifteen dollars an hour, to, to buy food, to clothe your children, to pay for higher education and so on. It is basically impossible. And the arguments of some people opposed to this have been interesting because those on low wages in our city are ratepayers, and they will put their money back into the local economy. Why can we not value that contribution? I am concerned that the, the argument has been rejected that when we talk about parking wardens, it's great to pay them the living wage because you end up with all these workforce benefits, but when you talk about security guards, you don't get them. And we heard from a security guard tonight, and I think that was probably the best counter argument. And in fact, I'm hearing that we are starting to take staff away from other councils who are not paying the living wage. So I think that says quite a lot. I think we need to be clear, we've had quite a lot of conversation about whether the legal advice that we have received actually prohibits this move, and I think it is clear that it does not. All it says basically is that we shouldn't have a blanket policy. Well, we don't. So that's fine. And that we need to show the benefits. Well, I think it's quite obvious. If you are paying someone a good wage, if you treat them well, then you will stop some of the around undisciplined employees, unmotivated employees, or potentially even dishonest employees.
Councillor, can you wrap up?
Yes, just finishing. And look, I think, yes, we are a leader in this area, but the companies that, who want our work, who want our money, will soon learn that they have to pay a living wage. So they will follow after us. So I want a wage, and that's why I will not support this second recommendation that values the work that everyone does in the city, not just a few.
And do we have a seconder for the amendment? Councillor Free, do you wish to speak now?
I have my right of reply, thank you.
Thank you. Going to debate, councillor Leicester.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to foreshadow an amendment should two be approved, be carried, the amendment, or foreshadow an amendment to replace it.
Can you foreshadow what it is?
It's in front of you, councillors.
Eagle, can you read that? And can somebody send him an email copy at the same time, please? If that hasn't already happened?
Yeah, that would be good.
So who can do that? Can somebody do that? So I'll just give you a moment before we move in. Do you have a seconder? Thank you. Councillor Lester, do you wish to speak now or will you wait till?
I'll reserve my right.
Thank you. Councillor Ahopeni-Mersa, do you wish to speak now?
I'll wait till councillor Lester has stopped.
Right. Okay, remembering this is foreshadowed, you may speak to both of the matters. Yes, you can. Of course. Councillor Foster, welcome.
Can I just ask the chief executive for advice on particularly three?
Yes, fair enough.
Ritchie, please don't try and chair the meeting from that end. Secondly, this is a question on the new recommendation. It would have been difficult for people to have asked before.
So, so the question is the implications and your advice on that particular recommendation?
Not sure. We're quite late into the year. That will be challenging, and it's something we'd need to review. I don't know at this point how we would achieve three. We've got a lot of pressures on the budget generally, but we'd have to go away and look at it.
Thank you. Anyone else on the speaking list? On remembering you are on the recommendation to withdraw or to remove recommendation two. Councillor Ritchie.
I would like to have heard from others. First of all, I support the amendment and I won't speak to the foreshadowed amendment. I will, in all likelihood, support that as well, although I would like to hear anything that comes forth, if anything does. Today, councillors, basically we are making, we are making a fiscal decision, but we primarily should not resile from the fact that we are making a political statement. We are politicians. We are making a statement about human dignity, about equality, about freedom, about fairness. You heard from the one security guard officer who said that his life, his pay is too low to have a decent life. I believe that every councillor around this table is concerned about the people in this city having a decent life. The cost is being addressed, is being addressed in the foreshadowed amendment, but even without the foreshadowed amendment, the cost over seven years is relatively small, with some money already put aside in our budget. money already put aside in our budget. The benefit is to families, is to consumers, is to retailers, is to businesses. I would like to have seen or heard this debate before the tenders were competitively not let, but advertised. I would like to have counsel...
Sorry, excuse me. Councillor Richie, you're fine. I'd just like other councillors to listen to councillor Richie in silence, as she likes to listen to us in silence.
Thank you for that acknowledgement. I would like to see in future that our tenderers are given some kind of incentive to pay a living wage. Let's be real about this situation. Security services are public services. They were once provided for by the police, by the government, either central government or local government, or both. But they are no longer. They are provided by contractors. If they had been provided by ourselves, we would be in a position to pay the living wage in accordance with our decision-making. The Local Government Act says that we, as councils, must ensure improved quality effectiveness. We are obliged to provide good, quality, efficient public services. Those good, quality, efficient public services will not be diminished by providing a living wage. They are likely to be enhanced. And finally, I just want to quote from the nineteen... and no, I wasn't here in nineteen oh eight. From the nineteen oh eight Local Bodies Contracts Act, and I paraphrase, "We must pay then such rates of wages or other remuneration as are considered usual and fair for the description of labour to which they relate." And I ask you whether you think that the presentation by the security officer was being paid now a decent wage. Finally, I just want to quote from the retailers who presented to us. And they said they would prefer that rates were lowered if efficiencies can be found. Well, I ask this council, where was the debate around the airport extension and three hundred million, six hundred million, and the economic slush funds? When there is clear understanding and clear business cases in relation to that expenditure and the impact on rates, then you can argue with...
Councillor, I would like you to sit down.
I'll finish my sentence.
No, you will not, because I find your commentary about slush funds that were democratically voted on offensive.
All right, well, I will withdraw that.
You have come to the end of your time. Thank you.
Then, when there is that debate...
Thank you, councillor. Right. Now, anyone else on the speaking list? Include councillor Ahepinimersa, councillor Eagle. Give us a wave if you want to speak at any point.
Madam Chair, I think I'm clear, but I just want to make it very clear, I can speak to this as well as the foreshadowed amendment. Right. Well, Madam Mayor...
May, but it's not compulsory, just to clarify for everyone.
I'll factor that into my considerations. I listened carefully to the arguments put by the chamber and the other representatives of various trading, et cetera, et cetera. Two people, I reject their analysis, the same as I rejected it over paying our staff the living wage. I rejected those same arguments over the CCO payments. They have not changed, and I will continue to reject them in terms of at least this contract that we are discussing tonight. I respect their views, but I reject them in their entirety. Can I bring up this aspect of social, which has been raised by a number of people during this debate before tonight? I hadn't spoken to this problem before, but I'm going to speak to it tonight. And it's almost like it's a dirty word that we factor in a social consideration. Well, the Christmas parade is very clearly about a social benefit. The Duaali festival is very clearly about a social benefit. The Mataki Festival is about a social benefit. And I tell you what, councillors, the economy of this city has not collapsed since we implemented these changes for our staff and in relation to CCOs. The city has not disappeared into the pit. We have not got a revolt by employers. We have not got a revolt by ratepayers anywhere, anytime, since we did that. And I'm predicting we're not going to get it over this either. It was interesting that when Prue spoke, when Reiman spoke, she usefully put together a construct of words which we have mentioned before, but she put it perhaps more succinctly when she talked about the circular flow of expenditure. That's right. What people get and spend goes round. Haven't seen a big revolt by people from the business sector about that. No one's rung me about it, but I tell you what, councillors, I have been regularly contacted by cleaners, by a person few days ago, and I will not be identifying her, but works for Enliven, and she's being paid slave wages to look after our parents, to look after our elderly people, and she is being paid slave wages. And I ask those of you who are struggling with this, as I said before, when you are old, remember this conversation today. And finally, your worship rounding off for now. I accept, but don't agree with people who are opposed to this from a values basis. They don't like it. It doesn't meet their value system and their platform. But I will absolutely reject any argument that this council cannot afford it, because we can. And I will speak to that further if we get to the foreshadowed amendment by councillor Leicester. And if you haven't read Max Rashbrooks's item in the paper this morning, I really urge you to read it, councillors.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Free.
Thank you for the useful debate so far, colleagues. It has been interesting. And I also thank those who presented to us earlier. I have listened, I've taken on board much of what you've said. I do want to refute something someone from the Chamber of Commerce said, because they seemed to imply that this was going to cost the people who were contracting to employ security staff. In fact, it's not going to cost them. What we are discussing is that it's going to cost council, and that's our responsibility. Our responsibility as councillors is that we need to obviously provide services in the most cost-effective and affordable way. But the definition of effectiveness is actually efficient, effective, and appropriate to present and future circumstances. And I'd like to suggest that that actually leaves a lot of room for judgment. And it's our judgment whether we think this is actually a good move or not. We've listened to all the evidence, and it's our judgment. And in my judgment, this is something we actually do need to do. Let's have a look at the history of our own history of paying the living wage. When we decided to pay the parking wardens the living wage to bring them in-house, we had all these same arguments raised against it. It was going to cost us, I don't know, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It was going to be, we were going to be possibly subject to court action. I remember it all. What actually happened is we bought them in-house, we paid them the living wage, we gave them additional training, they were given their own lunchroom. And what actually happened was that morale went up. We had zero staff turnover for quite some time. We had lots of positive comments from the public about how great the service that they were providing was. And best of all, instead of it costing us money, it actually saved us money. Can you believe that? It actually saved council money. Now, we aren't talking quite that situation. Everything has to be judged on its own merits. But I believe there's a very good case here that if we actually pay more, we'll get better quality staff. And we're not talking trivial services here. We're talking things that really matter. We're talking our regulatory services, our security services. We're talking quite dangerous work, work that requires maturity, requires quite a degree of training, continuity, requires people with self-discipline, and strong interpersonal skills. We're not going to get that if we're just going to pay rock-bottom wages. Our city actually deserves more. We deserve high-calibre staff. And that's what these people have said. The security company has actually said, what will the benefits be? They may not have expressed their case very strongly, but they said they expect to see a reduction in staff turnover, improved job satisfaction, attracting and retaining higher-quality candidates. These are not insignificant benefits. I will be supporting, obviously, the motion that I've seconded, but will probably also support the other foreshadowed recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Free. I don't have anyone else on this recommendation, so we will vote by show of hands on the Pannett Free remove recommendation two amendment. Division, please. We will be... Given it won't be terribly clear if we all put our hands up at once.
Well, you have to call the names, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry.
No, we will first, I will first call for all those hands in favour, and the staff will call out the names as they go through. Thank you for accepting that the chair is at this end of the table, councillor Richie. Those in favour of this amendment. You can read them out, call them out. Please.
Your worship, Reed Brown. Oh, sorry. Councillor Ahepinimersa. Councillor Lee. Councillor Peck. Councillor Leicester. Councillor Sarah Free. Councillor Richie. Councillor Bennett.
Councillor Eagle will tell us whether he's for or against, when we've got all of the others. I think he's probably going to be easiest unless he has already informed you. So those against?
Councillor Foster. Councillor Coghlan. Councillor Walsh. Councillor Marsh. Councillor Young.
And councillor Eagle?
I'm for.
Councillor Eagle is for. Thank you. I declare that carried. We will now move to debating the foreshadowed amendment. I call on councillor Leicester to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to speak first to the amendment and unpick some of the arguments that have been put forward today about reasons why we shouldn't support paying a living wage to our security providers. Now, the first argument put forward is the cost to ratepayers. The cost to ratepayers is approximately one dollar fifty per annum on an individual average ratepayer basis. But this amendment doesn't have a cost to ratepayers. In fact, it has reduced cost to ratepayers because here we are suggesting that we reduce our personnel and travel expenditure by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per annum to maintain a fiscally neutral position in the current financial year. The reduced costs come by the savings of the new tendered security contract, which in fact reduced the cost by approximately one hundred and eighteen thousand per annum. So ratepayers' costs will be going down. Cost-effective, is this cost-effective? And there's no obvious benefit. Well, the KPIs seek to prove that point. We want to seek the evidence around this point. We want to know, because we do know from our own parking wardens when they came in-house, the quality and effectiveness of the services improved, the employee retention rates compared with industry averages also improved, employee satisfaction is now higher with our parking wardens, levels of absenteeism are lower. Will our security services providers, will we attract better quality candidates? Well, we know for a fact that with our parking wardens, we did exactly that. We now have ambassadors for the city, they're also being paid more, and it was a much cheaper service by approximately two hundred thousand dollars than we had in the past. It was a win on all fronts. I hope that if we bear the fruit of a similar process in this, we will have the same result and get, again, a fiscally neutral outcome for ratepayers with no increased cost, but a better provision of service. The third point, the legal advice. The legal advice refers to a blanket policy. We specifically said we'll do this on a case-by-case basis. The two are quite separate. I'm not saying now, hand on heart, that we could definitely do this for all contractors. We probably can't. The costs are likely to be too high. We do not want to have a significant financial impact on the city nor on ratepayers, and hence we're being very cautious in our approach. This is, again, two hundred and fifty thousand per annum, offset by the savings that are proposed here, and it's about one dollar fifty per ratepayer, a cost we won't even need to bear. It's a matter for central government. Well, when benefits were increased by twenty dollars for every single beneficiary, we were the hells of outrage. No, what we heard was what a great move, what a political master show. How proud we are of a national government increasing benefit payments by twenty dollars per week. And I also applauded them. I said, "Well done." Why did they do it? Because it's the right thing to do. It didn't save any money. Was it the most cost-effective approach? No, they could have reduced it as they did in nineteen ninety-one, but they chose not to. They increased it because it's the right thing to do. The people that have opposed it today and submitted against it, are you also going to complain to government about those increased payments? I hope you'll be consistent in your approach. To speak to? Well, if retailers' rates increase, which they won't based on the amendment, and there would be a dramatic impact and retailers would have to close, well, why hasn't that happened already? Because we introduced a living wage for all four hundred or so of our internally employed staff years ago. What happened? Nothing. People got paid more. Rates didn't go up any more than was otherwise predicted, was otherwise budgeted for. It hasn't had a material impact on anybody else in the city, on retailers, on employers. What has happened is the tens of thousands of people who already travel into Wellington because they receive higher wages and higher salaries than they do in outlying areas across the region, continue to come into the city every day because we're a beacon. We want to be a smart capital. We want to be a place where talent wants to live. But do we want it just for a few, or do we want it for the entire population? So when we come in and people serve those fast-growing IT companies, do their cleaners, their security providers, do they, their administration staff, do their salaries and wages also reflect the fact that we're a beacon for the city? I don't know anybody that wants to move to Tash Kent, for example, or wants to move to a city where wages are low. I know plenty that will move to Singapore, Dubai, or Zurich, why? Because wages are high there. They are aspirational, they can earn more, they can perform well, and we want people to come to Wellington because they can earn more in the city, and that's what a smart capital seeks to achieve.
We can now have the seconder, if he wishes to speak now, and then I have councillor Eagle after that.
Picking up again on a comment made by a submitter, your worship, earlier on tonight in relation to the reference to security guards being paid a high wage here and a lesser wage in Portidur or anywhere else, and the word ridiculous. Mr Cranny, I think, answered that very well when he said, "Well, let's turn it around the other way. Isn't it ridiculous that people are being asked to support themselves on these unacceptable levels of wages?" The right thing to do. It was good, it was good having a really good discussion with councillor Leicester this morning, today, about the various aspects of this. He has gone through it in some detail. I have not a lot further to add because we went through this usefully today. The right thing to do. Again, if people believe it is not the right thing to do because of their particular value set, and I say that totally agnostically, but if that's what they think, well, I respect that view but will disagree with it. If they have other views, I would like to hear them tonight because this is going to be a rolling debate through this council. It ain't going away. I don't mean tonight, I'm talking about ongoing. It is going to be an ongoing debate. And I would urge those councillors who have genuinely have some views that perhaps are different from the chamber and different from the other representatives that spoke against us tonight, or spoke in favour of the officers, should I say, I would sincerely like to hear those because I'm wondering what is new, given, as councillor Leicester said, there has not been a collapse to date. There hasn't been lines of people accosting us in supermarkets about it. There hasn't been emails... There hasn't been emails on it. Haven't had a single one since we began this political process. Not a single one. And I don't predict I'm going to have one. So I urge you councillors to consider the financial things. As I said before, this is not going to cost us. It's not going to cost a ratepayer. I will have to find this, people might not be able to travel so far and this and that. That goes for me or any officer or anybody else in this organisation. But let us not use the money argument because it does not stack up. Just consider, is it the right thing to do or not? If you think it's not, please tell me and us why that is the case.
Thank you councillor Ahipini Mercer. I'd like to move to councillor Eagle.
Thank you, your worship. Is it coming through all right in terms of the sound?
Make you stand up.
Sorry, worship. I mean, does it sound, does it sound coming through okay? No?
He can hear you. He can't hear us.
No sound. Oh, you can hear me, right, all right. Thank you, your worship, and good afternoon, colleagues. I mean, what a beautiful day it is here in Perth, 35 degrees and not a whisper of wind. And look, I've seen more all-black jerseys than ones with a wallaby on it, but I've seen lots of purple, purr, glory football fans around. So we'll talk about football another day. Look, can I thank all of those who have shared their views on the living wage with us? Tonight, I realised that we will make a decision on whether to directly chief executive to require a contractor to implement a living wage for work for the council. Now, like a small speaker president, and we must make a decision that's in the best interest of ratepayers. And remember, without repeating what others have said, we were pioneers when we started the journey at 1840 and I'm proud that we've got through where we have so far. I think it would be too easy to start by focusing strictly on the costs and legal issues and my colleague councillor Lester has outlined those subtly. But instead, and to mirror some of the words from councillor Ritchie, I want to start by saying that the living wage is fundamentally about human decency and fairness so people can live in dignity and that's contrary to what some are saying. And I think if some think the issue is ideological, then I'd say change your ideology by supporting the idea of fairness and closing the widening gap between, sorry, and closing the widening gap, the widening pay gap because ultimately it's harming our society and I'll come back to that in a minute. But I ask you, is it fair that those who deliver core council services for the city are paid between $14 and $16? I think absolutely not. I also think that security services are a core council service. And I'm reminded that a 27-year-old security guard in Orton died on his first night on the job. What that tells me is that the provision of such services can cost you your life. I mean, is that worth $14 to $16 an hour? Broken shift, night time work, complicated scenario, dealing with undesirable people, undesirable situations. You and I wouldn't do it, someone has to do it because sometimes they had no choice. Another example of this is when we outsourced our in-house working city operations a few years back. Now, those 37 former staff that more than 500 years ago combined, but they were earning $20 to $25 an hour under direct council control. Look, I won't mention the 90-day rule that goes with it, but what I will tell you is that most of those guys no longer work for our contractors and some now are unemployed. And look, being unemployed after 40 years working for the council, less than 90 days with a new contractor is really what harm looks like. But what is the cost for him and his family? What's the real cost to the city on the fee depression? We don't ask and we talk about dollars and cents. It's interesting, we had the budget to pay those guys well above the current living wage of $19, $25 only a few years ago. Where's the money gone? What is the problem now? I do want to reiterate that the living wage was well-circumstanced during senior planning process and before that, the annual planning process. And look, we had an overwhelming endorsement from the majority of Wellingtonians. So, look, it's time to deliver on that promise of becoming the living wage capital. That means ideally in my mind, developing a framework that prioritises core council services, remembering many were once delivered by council itself. It also includes the development of an accreditation framework specifically. And I believe we could work with an organisation like the chamber and others to get this right. That's not impossible. Look, I want to finish where I started. The living wage fundamentally is about human decency and fairness of people can live in dignity. I urge you to support the idea of fairness and do your bit to close the widening pay gap because ultimately it's harming society and really those who are most in need. We, the council, we have the money. There is the money there, it's about priority. And the living wage is now a priority for this city and for Wellington. I want to finish with a few things. It speaks that you can judge a person's character by how you treat those who can do nothing for them. That's how we'll be judged when we decide whether to provide a living wage to the lowest-paid people in our community irrespective of what lawyers, business experts or annual lobbyists say. So this came up during the long-term planning process, timing moved from being the coolest little capital to the fairest little capital in the world and I support the amendment. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you and well done and thanks for everyone for listening so hard. We now, do we have anyone else on the speaking list? In that case, we will move to... On the amendments? Well, if you don't need to, you don't need to. We could move just to the right of reply. So, on the amendment. So councillor Foster.
I'm not going to traverse the whole argument on the living wage. I might do that in substantive when we get back to that. But I do have a problem, particularly with three. And it is, I mean, to me, I struggle with that because if we thought there was that sort of capacity within our budgets to make these kind of cuts, now, it might be that there is, but if we thought that there was, why weren't we going through with a fine-tooth comb our budget when we did the LTP, what, three months ago? And in fact, this council, most councils for the last few years have not wanted to do that. In other words, what we're saying is that when we approve a budget, we know, or we think we know, that there is some space in there to do these kind of things. Now, I don't think that is an honest way of doing our budget, I'm afraid, if we thought this...
Look, I'm most sympathetic to, just hold the clock for a moment, to people wanting to see what's up there, but we can't really have external people coming right up to the table. Can you find somewhere where you can see the big screen up there? If somebody could shuffle along a bit, that would be great. Is it working at the back? Yes. Thank you. It's not perfect, but it's the best we can do. Or you can watch us live on an iPad somewhere. Councillor?
So, look, Madam Mayor, I find this a real struggle in terms of our budgeting processes, as I've probably made fairly clear. If we were asking the officers to go and explore this, that'd be one thing. That'd be fine. I did suggest that councillor Lester, when he moved this, I said, hey, here's a note. Can you have a look at that? I think that'd be a much fairer way of doing it. But to just say we are going to unilaterally take that money out of the budget and if that's a budget that we have approved three months ago, I have a real difficulty with. Because if we can do it here, why can't we then go back through our entire LTP budget and say, look, can we find some savings here? Or here, or here, or here, or here? Because that suggests to me that we don't actually have confidence in what we have passed as a budget. And I don't think that that is a very good form of governance. So I think your four there is fine, councillor Lester. And clearly there is going to be a will around this table to do the two. Okay, I'm not going to agree with that, but I can understand the logic behind that. But three, I think, is really problematic. Sure, ask for an exploration, ask for some, an exploration of can we find some money to offset this? But don't just unilaterally take money out of a budget. I don't think that is the right way to go.
Yes, certainly. We certainly will when we come to that. Does anyone else wish to speak to this amendment? In which case we'll move to right of reply.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll respond only to councillor Foster's query. Thank you, other councillors, for your contributions and measures of support. In terms of the costs councillor Foster referred to, you know as well as anyone around this table that we in our long-term plan and annual plan, we focus largely on variations to the budget on any given year. We don't have insight into every line-by-line personnel expenditure of that $91 million for every business unit. You know that for a fact. We go through it in as much detail as possible, but every year there are variations. And most recently last month, we had one at GFP where we reprioritised CapEx projects and OpEx projects because we try to foreshadow what will occur over the course of a year, but there are variations every single year. So we don't do that. What we do know for a fact is there is a surplus every year. We do know that of that $91 million, $250,000 is a small, a very minor proportion and therefore below any real point of difference or concern or factor that it's not going to be material to any actual operational budget over the course of an entire year. So hence, that's why we should direct staff to make that change. There will be restructures throughout the year. There will be turnover of staff. There are training budgets. We know that there's a lot of work going on currently. So there is scope within that $91 million to make a very minor reduction for the benefit of ratepayers.
Thank you, councillor. I've been asked to take the two, three and four separately. So we will do that. So please, we're going to, you're going to have to be very careful because also councillor Eagle needs to know exactly where we are in this process as well if he's going to participate. So I'm going to... This is still an amendment, so we're not taking, receiving the information yet. It will then either become the substantive or disappear. So please put your hand up if you are voting for number two, agree for the preferred supplier to implement a living wage. Councillor Eagle, do you wish to cast your vote?
Yes, for.
And voting against, two? Thank you, I declare that carried. Number three, agree to reduce the overall personnel and travel expenditure budget, et cetera. Those four? Councillor Eagle?
Oops, sorry, I said, I said it wrong. So what were we on?
We're on number three, the reduction of the personnel and travel expenditure to maintain that fiscally neutral position.
Four.
And those against? Thank you, I declare that carried, eight, seven. We will now move to number four, A, B, C, D and E. Please raise your hands if you're voting for. And councillor Paul Eagle, for or against?
For.
So that's the carried unanimously becomes the new substantive. Now, people who have only spoken to the amendments have a right to speak to the substantive if they wish. Does anyone wish to speak to the, what is now the substantive? One, two, three and four. Councillor Peck?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And of course, I support the resolution. And there's a couple of comments I want to make on the whole debate. I want to thank those that provided us with advice. We had some very clear advice about the legal position we're in. And I think it's important as councillors that we're aware of that before we take these decisions. We also had some quite strong representations from the community, both for and against the living wage and each of the views expressed are genuinely held and strongly held. And I want to acknowledge that as well. I really, maybe three things to say in respect of this. First of all, we're City Hall. We're not some tinpot organisation out in the, struggling away, trying to survive in the marketplace. We're City Hall. We're a big fish. We will survive anything. We are, in fact, as I've been advised at our initiation sessions when we first got elected, we are a body corporates in perpetual succession. So we're going nowhere. We're going to be around for a long, long time. We have, Madam Mayor...
Councillor Peck, sorry, just wait until, I know you're enjoying getting some response, but if you could just wait till they're silent, we'll carry on.
All right, okay. Well, there could well be some amalgamation. Maybe I agree with that. Maybe Paula Bennett has a point in that respect, but at the minute, we're dealing with the Wellington City Council and what councillor Lester had to say about how the world hasn't ended with the introduction of the living wage is quite true. In fact, for a number of small businesses, there's been maybe a little bit of upturn from those that can afford now to buy a cup of coffee or, as our submissioner said, take his father out for fish and chips a little bit more often than once a month. So a little bit more discretionary money. And it is good to be the beacon in that respect. And the council, instead of getting all doom and gloomy about it, should pat itself on the back and say, well done. We've led the way in an important social area and let's, you know, let's be proud of that. The second thing I want to say, one of my heroes back in the dim, dark days, to show how old I am, was Martin Luther King. And one of the things that we've had to face in this debate is the very real possibility that somebody wants to take us to court for a judicial review. And we've had the legal advice about that. Martin Luther King was very clear on this point. He says, one has a moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws. A moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws. Well, are we doing that? Well, we're certainly making a decision which is going to, which is certainly going to be challengeable. I'm sure of that, Madam Mayor. But is that just? Well, maybe we're not the ones to make that decision, but I would go and ask anybody that has to live on $14.75 whether what we're doing tonight is unjust. And let's see if we can get an answer to that in the courts of justice. One of the things I do know about justice is justice is blind. Justice is not about, is not about correcting a wrong, Madam Mayor. It's about what's legally correct. So we will have to find that out along the way. But I ascribe to Martin Luther King's view on that and I say that we need not be, we need not be cowed by the challenge that we might be challenged in court. And finally, I want to say this. I want to agree with those that say that the feedback I've had in respect to the decisions the council's taken in the past has been only positive with the exception, Madam Mayor, of the Tory trolls that hop on my Facebook page and have... of the Tory trolls that hop on my Facebook page and have me on about it. Well, keep hopping on Tory trolls and keep saying what you want to see because the truth of the matter is, you know, I'm not cowed by this stuff. I actually enjoy the odd little bit of scuttlebutt across my page. I might even engage with one or two of them. But at the end of the day, they are what they are. They're Tories and they don't like to see poor people get a hand up in life. Madam Mayor, I'm quite happy to support the resolution and I'm looking forward to the council taking the next step in this particular journey.
Thank you. That was a little longer than your three minutes.
I'd like to apologize.
And I'm sure you will have all the more comments on your Facebook as a result of it. Are there any other speakers to the substantive? Councillor Young?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I've always been very clear about my views on the living wage or the Wellington wage or whatever it's called today. I oppose it. It's a clunky, ineffectual tool that benefits the government most because it reduces their social security bill. So Wellington's ratepayers are actually subsidising New Zealand taxpayers. We need to stick to our core role, which is to run the city as effectively and efficiently as possible. But tonight's debate isn't really about philosophical issues. It's about a legal issue around the proposed security services contract. Does it comply with the Local Government Act? Does it provide services in the most efficient and the most effective manner? The supplier says no. I think he had no. Applying the living wage to this contract will add about 19% to the contract price. That's millions over the seven-year term of the contract into which this vote locks us. Officers have warned us that significant budget allocations will need to be made to fund the additional cost of applying the living wage to this contract with more down the line, especially if it rolls out to other contracts. So either our rates will blow out, and they've already been raised by 5% this year, or we'll have to cut services. So we've got in front of us this thing that we will maintain a fiscally neutral position. So will we shut swimming pools, reduce the hours at our libraries? We haven't been told. This smacks of policy being made on the hoof. Councillors often talk about the need for evidence-based, reasoned and clear decisions, correct process and the need to avoid writing blank cheques. At a pre-meeting, one of the councillors, and I can't remember who or I'm too nice to remember who, said that... But someone who supports the living wage, we should consult with the people who represent the ratepayers. And I pointed out that's actually our job. We've got supporters of the living wage here around the council table who don't pay to their own staff. Why does it make sense for them not to pay the living wage to their own staff when they're very happy to spend ratepayers' money on this? Both the council officers and our lawyers are concerned that if we apply the living wage to the security services contract, it's likely we will be staring at a judicial review with the council's legal expenses funded by, oh yes, the ratepayers. And there's a high probability we will lose. Finally, I would like to quote the Chair of the Audit and Risk Committee, who last week told us in Governance and Finance, and I quote, "Very few people around this table realise that people have to open their chequebooks to pay their rates bill. They will reach a point when enough is enough." He was right. And surely the probability of a judicial review is enough. Madam Mayor, I support the officer's advice and I will not be supporting the living wage for the security services contract.
Thank you, councillor Young. Councillor Marsh?
Thank you, Worship. Well, I guess from the outset of the discussion around the living wage a little while back, my position hasn't really changed. But I recognise that people need to earn more. We've heard about parking services and they've been roundly praised because they have been bought in-house. The parking officers are now paid more, but they've been better trained. They're more highly skilled. They're ambassadors for the city. They're not doing the same job that they were when they were privately employed. They are much better. And I hear all the time, "There is such a change." So we're getting more for our money. They are better trained and they're being paid for that expertise. And I bet you that they have got greater job opportunities wherever they look. The security officer who spoke, he talked about fish and chips. But I wonder, you know, if he had the opportunity to be better trained, to be more highly skilled, to be educated by the organisation that he's working for and be able to look at the whole world as a place where he could get a job instead of perhaps just a security firm, what would he choose? Being able to go and have fish and chips or have a much better job so he could then enjoy time with his kids, knowing that he's earning more and he's got more capacity to earn more because he is more highly trained? Somebody said, "Get better quality staff." Could have been my colleague from the Eastern Ward. So that means we shed poorer quality staff. Let's put the effort into having a more skilled staff and paying them more, not just paying people more. Let's give them that hand up and pay them more and train them and educate them.
Thank you, councillor Marsh. Do I have any other speakers? Oh, councillor Ritchie to the substantive.
First of all, I want to repeat that this debate has been, for some, about fairness, decency, freedom and dignity and the rights of people to deserve a decent life. I just want to also point out to councillor Young that in accordance with the decision that has just been made by council, this is a fiscally neutral decision. That is the decision that has been made by council. Thirdly, councillor Young has talked about evidence-based decision-making around this council. And I have to quote again, $91 million in our long-term plan for an airport extension, which was not evidence-based and without a business case. $91 million. Finally, I just want to say that I find it really interesting that we have a bunch of lawyers around this table arguing a court case. Well, actually, no court case has been... no case has been made yet. There is no judicial review. Section 10 of the Act says that council's purpose is to meet the needs of communities for good, quality public services. I think we can argue, and our legal advisers will argue, if they have to, very strongly, that that's what we are doing. And actually, I'd like to refer back to the Local Government Act of 2002, which was emasculated by the current government, where we had a responsibility for wellbeing. We had responsibility for economic, social, cultural and environmental wellbeing of all citizens in this city. That Act should still prevail. And my last point is, I want to thank everyone around this table who has support particularly in relation to this contract and this group of people. And I want to thank particularly those people who are next door and behind us who have worked arduously and hard to achieve already a living wage for some people and who will continue to argue strongly and put great effort into this debate. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ritchie. And just for people's information, after we've taken this vote, we will have a 10-minute break before we move to the other items on the agenda. Councillor Coghlan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, this is obviously a difficult thing to debate because of course, if you don't support it, you are immediately deemed to be pretty heartless and uncaring and unkind and have a very poor value system and all the other terrible things like that. But the reality is, we're actually not like that. And it was good of Justin actually to remind us of those benefit increases that actually weren't actually introduced by a Labor government but by, in fact, the national government, first in 20 years or whatever. So look, the thing that we've got to take into consideration in our decision-making is that we actually have to represent all the ratepayers in the city. And that includes actually a lot of people who are on, you know, fixed incomes, superannuants, people who actually aren't earning very much money, you know, retailers, landlords, et cetera. And, you know, there are actually many people who do struggle to pay their rates. And actually, they do struggle with rates rises. But, you know, today, the issue for me isn't really about this particular contract because actually, if we really only had to consider this particular contract, it'd be relatively straightforward. We'd probably agree that the increased wage doesn't really, you know, introducing the living wage isn't actually going to represent necessarily any increase in the effectiveness of the particular services provided. We'd probably agree that, you know, we might be at risk of being taken to the High Court because that's what the legal advisers said. And we'd probably agree that we can afford it. But the issue is actually more about, you know, setting a policy and where do you draw the line? And to argue that this is really being addressed on a case-by-case basis, all of these different contracts, I think it's a bit spurious and I think it's actually not really true. Because we have to be fair. And once you set a precedent, then that becomes the baseline. So out of existing budgets, and, you know, we do go through a budget-setting process and it takes a long period of time. And, you know, we do have to sort of try and stick to our budget because, you know, that is actually fair to all of the people we've consulted on it and the staff who have to actually implement the workings of the council. You know, how can you possibly fairly apply this precedent across all of our contracts, which effectively would need to be subject to the same sort of treatment? Would you apply this to capex assets like, you know, pipes and, you know, housing bills and stormwater renewals and waste management and construction and cleaning? I mean, the chief executives told us that the council wages are less than $100 million. The balance is spent on goods and services. So, you know, we're talking about one contract here incurring an additional $2.4 million of additional cost. You know, multiplying that over lots of contracts, actually, CFO told me at the worst case, could potentially, you know, blow out to $125 million. So this has to inevitably be funded through rates. Whether you like it or not, it has to be paid for. But not necessarily, it would appear with this particular case, with introducing any increase in productivity or efficiency. So actually, is that fair? So look, we are already ahead of the pack, that is the city. We can manage a living wage for our employees and we've introduced that. But I think it's a bit more difficult when extending it to other businesses. And I actually do think that the minimum wage should really be set by central government. So this contract could potentially be unlawful. We have a duty as a good employer and also a duty to all of our ratepayers. And it is not... it's not actually our dollars that we're dealing with. It is the ratepayers. And I think that we do have to respect that. We do have fiduciary duties as councillors, no matter how we feel about different things. So purchasing a service for an increase of 19% more without any increase in productivity or efficiencies doesn't actually seem altogether fair for those people that have got to pay for it. So I don't want to be in a position, and I'm not in a position and I'm not an authority on whose job is worth more or what value one job is against another. I mean, you know, as far as I'm concerned, we have a great deal of respect for everybody who provides any good and service for council and anyone who works for us. That's not really for councils to determine, but we do have to represent all of our ratepayers and we do have to consider all of these decisions and the role and effects for them. So I think in this case for me, I have to do what is set out, you know, and is right by the Local Government Act. I have to act lawfully and I have to act fairly. And I am consistent on this issue. And unfortunately, I won't be able to support this substantive. And just another point, I think, you know, yeah, that's right. We haven't experienced a collapse of the city by introducing the living wage. But just to remind people that that did go through quite a consultative process. And in fact, it has been budgeted for and agreed. So I think as an organisation, we have to be careful. You know, we set out a budget and we have got to try and incorporate what we can into the budget. And I do really agree with councillor Foster that, you know, it's not entirely fair to be changing it and potentially by significantly large amounts as we go through contract after contract after contract, bearing in mind it's not really just this contract we're talking about, without actually going through proper consultative processes. So, yeah, unfortunately, I might be unable to support.
Thank you, councillor. I don't have any other requests to speak, so... Well, councillor, I said I didn't have any other requests to speak. There's no need to wait. Yes, that's not the same as asking to speak, councillor Foster. I will let you and councillor Wolf speak, but it's not like a little game of shall I put my hand up before the mayor starts a write a reply?
I don't mind either way. No, you're not. Look, Madam Mayor, I don't think anybody around this table is going to change their minds in this debate. I guess the issue for me is how many times we're going to have this debate and end up with exactly the same result through this triennium. I understand the reasons that have been made for and against it and we've heard them again and again and again. So I guess I'm going to reiterate the reasons why I don't support this. The first one of them is the, I think that this is a badly targeted intervention. The calculations are fundamentally wrong. They're based on the cost of living essentially of a family. And we know that the majority of people we've been advised who will be beneficiaries of this actually aren't in family circumstances. So that's badly targeted. And as councillor Young has said as well, the government is a major beneficiary of this intervention. Look, I accept the moral position that people around the table have taken. It would be nice if it wasn't so much moralising that went with it. But what I am concerned with is that we are compulsorily taking somebody else's money from them to deliver that moral result. And some people have said, in fact, a number of people have said, "How will people live on that sort of, you know, $14 or $15 an hour?" Well, think about the superannuants in particular, who are often the ones who say to us, "Hey, our rates are too high." Well, if you said a superannuate was working for 40 hours a week, the amount that a single superannuate will be paid will be $9.36 an hour. But we're saying we'll take money from them to pay the living wage. And the amount that a couple would be earning would be $7.20 an hour equivalent. So those people, a large proportion of our constituency, are living on that kind of level. And we're saying, "You have to pay for the living wage." Now, that's where I do have a difficulty with that moral position that's being taken. In terms of the fiscal neutrality, that one or two people have said, "Look, I just think that this calls into question our entire budgeting process." And I do hope the calls that councillor Peck... Next time around, we actually have a really good, robust finance process, finance committee process, and we go through this thing line by line so we've got some confidence in what's in our budget. Because clearly, what this is saying is we can take money out of some budget at any stage and say, "Well, look, we want to spend more money here, so we'll flog it from there." And I can remember the hacker that the second of the amendment made. I moved an amendment which would have included, would have increased our budget by $30,000 and we had a massive debate about that because that $30,000 would have put us over the 4.9%. You can all remember that. And so that, to me, there seems to be a high degree of hypocrisy in this kind of approach to budgeting. Final thing I wanted to say, Madam Mayor, is that, to me, I think the law is reasonably clear. The legal advice is very clear. And I think this is where things have changed. Because we've now got that legal advice in the public arena, which we didn't have before. The last time we got that kind of advice was in private. It's now in public. And essentially, that is us waving the white flag of an organisation saying, "We shouldn't be doing this. We've got this wrong." And what it also means is it puts council staff in a position where I don't think that if somebody does challenge it, and nobody's saying that they would, but if somebody does challenge it, I don't think council staff can then say, "Here is the explanation." It's going to be down to us councillors. Those councillors have supported this to then explain why it is that we have been in that position. I asked Kerry Anderson that today. I said, "What's the circumstance?" "No, we're not legally liable for it, so we're safe on that grounds." But it will be councillors who probably have to defend the decision in court. So that'll be an interesting exercise. So I have not...
Are you out of time?
Okay, so I'll leave it there. And needless to say, I will not be supporting the substantive.
Councillor Wolf?
Madam Mayor, thank you. And thank you, fellow councillors, for the debate. Also, to those supporting the living wage. It's been said tonight that human decency and dignity is at the core of this and, of course, it is. And we all demand that people be treated correctly. But however, I'm not sure that the way that we're going about this is the right way. And I'm very, very uncomfortable with going against legal and officer advice. I would like to thank the CEO for his very brave and courageous comments. I think that they were very apt and the free and frankness of your delivery is something that I admire as well. One of the aspects that I'm very uncomfortable with is that this isn't our dealing. This is a central government issue. It isn't our responsibility to regulate the security industry. Um, it isn't our responsibility to regulate the security industry, which is something that we, we could be doing by, by applying this and, and, and supporting this. I, I, um, believe that as a good employer also, um, we're, we're not doing the right thing and, and there could be a trickle down effect. And, and that we, we could be seen to be disempowering the, the officers and, and good officers that we have who have given us fantastic, um, um, professional advice. I haven't supported this from the start and I'll be totally consistent right, right the way through. I, I think this has dangers and risks, um, for the rate payer. And, um, that's why I won't be supporting, um, this as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Um, councillor Eagle doesn't wish to speak to substantive, so I will now do the write of reply. I'll be, uh, reasonably brief because I think we've traversed most of the issues. And I do want to start by, um, absolutely agreeing with councillors who say people will have come to different conclusions as to whether this is a good thing or not. It's not whether you are in favour of, um, human dignity or not, it's about whether you think this is a reasonable thing to do for this organisation, for this contract. So, um, I'd like to endorse that. And we do represent the rate payers. We are also in the first year of implementing our long term plan. We did consult on the overall idea of whether we should pay the living wage or not. And the long term plan is made up of many votes. Probably all of us will find one or two things we didn't want in it and many things that collectively we do. One councillor referred to evidence based decision making and then raised various spectres of most unlikely cuts. So I don't see that there was a lot of evidence based decision making there. Then councillor Marsh, you're absolutely right, there are many ways of taking opportunity to improve your marketability, to improve your education and so forth. I just want to say yesterday, we heard from a refugee that until they were on the living wage, they were not able to have enough time to be able to study, to then take themselves through a degree and further education so that they can then contribute in a much wider sense to society. So really, all in all, I think this is a matter where we are making a judgment call. This is on one contract, this is with some provisos that we want to make sure that there are KPIs. Um, councillor Free, your point that it wasn't the strongest defence of these reasons is absolutely right. We want to tighten up the measurement of this. But we, there is also a general belief around this table that what has worked for increasing, um, quality and effectiveness for our wardens and our local hosts and our lifeguards is not only because they are part of the glorious Wellington City Council. It might have something to do with the wages and the satisfaction as well. And the changing our budget, we have, we often are called upon to reprioritise budgets, ideally through annual plan time, but sometimes between times. At a governance level suggesting that less than or around about a quarter of a percent of the personnel and travel expenditure be redirected, I don't think that that is going to cause too many headaches within the organisation. And if the chief executive has to come back to GFP or some other, um, finance meeting, no doubt he will feel free to. I will now take one through four. Do people wish to take them separately? Councillor Foster? Take one and then two through. Take it as one, okay. A division, of course. So those voting for all of the recommendations, please raise your hands or in the councillor's eagle, make the appropriate noises. Councillor Eagle, we're voting for all of the recommendations. Did you hear that? And against? And I was. And I would just take a moment to, um, communicate electronically. Well, it's, it's just a little unfortunate, it's frozen, he can't necessarily hear us. He said four, thank you councillor Eagle, we've heard you. So can we have the vote against again? Because cap, mister. Yes, councillor Marsh, you missed him. No, we're fine, we have got the right numbers and I declare one, two, three and four carried nine, six. We will now have a ten minute break and get back to the rest of the items on the agenda.
Madam Mayor, and I think it's timely that we debate this particular issue. Community concerns are growing around the world in terms of the exploration for oil and gas. And while we may acknowledge that there are some benefits under a conventional economic system, there are also significant costs. To get to the guts of this issue, there is a sentence in both of the submissions from ourselves and from Greater Wellington, is that exploration should not proceed if the environmental costs outweigh the economic benefits. And that is the crux of the issue. Some people may be disappointed that we haven't openly opposed it, but this test is a high one and it is entirely appropriate. I'd like to give a big thanks to staff because they have done some great work in a very short space of time, including on Labor Day, they were laboring while we were potentially having a bit of time off, so that is very much appreciated. So I know that this has been given to you today, but I hope you'll have seen that basically there are going to be some permits to be issued for exploration in five blocks and two of them are adjacent to Wellington City. While Greater Wellington has the primary responsibility, my argument would be that if there is an oil spill, the difference in boundaries will be somewhat academic. Our oceans belong to all of us. They are one of the greatest public goods of all, so it is absolutely appropriate. The advice here is that consultation should take place throughout the whole process rather than more towards the end. I perhaps have a slight difference of opinion around the economic potential. This, of course, may be illogical in the economic system that we currently adhere to, but the risks are so significant, the costs are so high, that from my point of view, this kind of essentially mining for fuel is not a sustainable practice. And I do think it is slightly worrying when we see the officer advice around the capacity of Maritime New Zealand. It may be that it is adequate to say to the companies that you have to have the best practices, but nevertheless, this is one area where it is too big to fail. If there is an oil spill, it would be disastrous. And I think it is right that officers have acknowledged the importance of our harbour, of our seas to our economy and quality of life. They are worth far more than the money that might be gained from mining for these fuels. Just finally, yes, I unfortunately have to agree that we will be relying on fossil fuels in the short to medium term. However, there is the acknowledgement here, which I think is important point to make to the government, that we need to reduce our energy use and then transition, in my view, rapidly to more renewable sources of energy. The silence on climate change is of concern as the world flocks to Paris in the next few weeks, and there just has to be some acknowledgement from this government that ultimately this kind of activity cannot be sustained. But look, I am very happy to support the submission. I think it's laid out many of the issues on quite a complex topic really well, and I would urge you to support it.
councillor Ritchie, seconding? councillor Free? Thank you. I'll take the second of the... Do you wish to speak councillor Free? So councillor Ritchie, over to you.
Madam Mayor, councillors, I will be supporting the submission only because it is encouraging the... whomever, the MIMBY or whoever the people are, to... Ministry, yeah, MIMBY, Ministry of Business and Innovation, to actually consult with the public. That's the only reason I am supporting this. I do not support the intent of the submission whatsoever, and I think we could have been much, much stronger in our opposition to, in this case, exploration permits with the intent possibly of mining for gas or fossil... If you didn't hear, on the radio tonight, the OECD has produced a report which is highly critical of this country, highly critical of its environmental record, and says that we have the highest per capita greenhouse gas emissions in the world of the 34 member countries. It also made a comment on waste going to landfills, which is not quite appropriate to this discussion at the moment. And also said, and it is highly relevant to this issue, that almost all countries managed to reduce gas emissions since 2000, but New Zealand increased by seven percent. I think that this city should be taking a lead on this issue, and that's why I don't support the intent of the submission at all. I don't support the economic argument that says, 'Well, we have, you know, we're doing all great things in relation to our economy, so we should support this', which is what the submission kind of says. I paraphrased it a bit. And I think that we should actually have a thrust that ensures that we reduce, not encourage, the increased use of fossil fuels. This submission says it's kind of okay, but where climate change is a bit of a problem, but it's kind of okay. Well, you would have heard also on the news, that, and I'll just give one example, not today, of, you know, people will not be able to very soon live... That's just one example. And finally, finally, I just find it a bit of an irony. Today Helen Kettle came to us. She has cleaned up the South Coast. She got an absolutely positively Wellington award, and she said, 'I love Wellington and I love the South Coast'. Well, you know, the beginning of this meeting, we adored the South Coast and we had no concern.
Ritchie, please, your time is up.
Okay. And at the end, we are supporting a submission which might exploit the South Coast to a great extent. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Does anyone else wish to speak to the submission? Councillor Free?
Okay. I'll just take my second as reply. Look, I don't think that this submission is actually supporting anything, it's just a comment on what the government has clearly decided to do anyway. So we do need to put in a submission, and I think that some very important points are made in this submission, including that the benefits that come from, you know, the royalties should actually accrue to the local communities that are taking the risk. And I think that's really important because there aren't actually... We apparently in New Zealand charge the lowest royalties for some of this stuff of anyone, and yet we're actually terribly exposed through our very wild coastal environments and our remoteness to the damage that can actually happen if there is an oil spill. I think that this submission does make some really important points. We are supporting Greater Wellington, who have also made a very clear... ...noted, in fact, that the government should do more to accelerate the transition to a lower carbon future to New Zealand. That's not going to happen overnight, but it does need to be accelerated, and this submission actually does say that. And of course, the environmental track record of the companies is featured highly in our submission. So we're not saying to the government that we approve of this, but if we don't say anything at all, then we don't even have the chance to make the points we want to make. So, you know, for this reason, it's important that the submission does go to the appropriate people.
Thank you. Did anyone else wish to speak? Then we will be write a reply.
There you go. As a card-carrying environmentalist, I probably don't need a lecture on whether this is a kind of an acceptable activity. But councillor Ritchie, I think you were out of the room when I started my speech. Let me remind you what Greater Wellington's submission says. Fundamentally, it is our strong view that any oil or gas exploration should not proceed unless it is clear that this activity will not result in adverse environmental impacts. I'm sorry councillor, under that test, under that test, it can't happen because there are adverse environmental impacts of carrying out this kind of activity. So I am very pleased that we are voting to support this hopefully, and that the regional council has taken such a strong view. Good on them for showing such leadership.
We will now vote on recommendations one through to five. So those in favour, put your hands up. And... Is councillor Eagle still with us? Yes, he did. I think it's unanimous then, is councillor Eagle... We're now moving to committee report three point one, the report of the Transport and Urban Development Committee, the housing accord implementation, and I call on councillor Foster to introduce the report.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. We didn't... We had a fairly substantial discussion about this at Transport and Urban Development, so I'm going to throw us a little bit of that, but it'd be up to people how they want to handle this. This is the third tranche of special housing areas. We're now getting down, we're now getting down to, I guess you could say, some rats and mice sort of ones. It would have been quite nice to have a more expansive, more proactive sort of collection of these, because I think there are some rats and mice still out there that we might be able to pick up if we do want some more special housing areas. Transport and Urban Development Committee was presented with five prospective special housing areas. We rejected the Spinmore Street one, and we're left with these four that are there. I wanted to focus my comments particularly on one of them because I have difficulty with that one in particular, and as it stands, I won't be supporting that one, and that's the Shelley Bay one. Now, I can understand the logic of including in the Shelley Bay special housing area, so we've already got one there, of including the legal road areas. That makes sense, if you're going to have one, let's, you know, let's include the road in areas in it. But what I have a real problem with is including the open space areas. Because when you look at our district plan, the open space areas are definitely not about housing. It's absolutely not what they are. Though the district plan has been through an extensive process of consultation and the statutory legal process, and we've got what we've got with both the rules and the zoning that we've got, and what would happen if the open space area comes... Oh, sorry, the open space area is included in the special housing area, is essentially provision of housing comes over the top of all the other objectives of the open space zone, and that has to be considered as the first consideration when a planning application is put in front of the council. So that means effectively, we've almost, we rub out all of those other things and say what housing is the first thing that we're looking for. Now, I know that what we've got down there in E at the moment is noting that offices must consider the open space values. They do have to do that, but they are then, as I said, that the housing one sits at the top of that list. That is the way it's been described to us, and that I think is a real problem, especially to do that essentially to stroke the pen, to change the rules that pertain to those particular areas. Now, some parts of the open space areas within the Shelley Bay area clearly aren't going to get developed because they are too precipitous. But there are some areas which could, and I guess for me, I can't support that with the open space bit in there because to me it undermines the integrity of our district plan and the long, long, long processes we went through to put those rules and those zonings in place. So if somebody did want to move an amendment, say that we can proceed with Shelley Bay but to exclude the open space areas, I would certainly welcome that and I would support that, but as it is, I will vote against Shelley Bay if it is not amended. So I move the papers and look forward to second.
Thank you. I'd like to second this important step. The special housing areas are no silver bullet for more housing, but they are an encouragement and it is a partnership with government. We're also in the very fortunate position, in my view, of agreeing in general places that are well within the city's footprint, unlike some other councils have agreed on the absolute edges. Shelley Bay will offer economic development opportunity for our treaty partner. It will offer most amazing place to live, visit, enjoy and work. Sadly, one of the few beaches in Wellington that receives the afternoon sun, and I... While councillor Foster's introduction would suggest that the whole of the open space might be covered, boy, I have been fully assured that the values, the underlying district plan values of the site will be taken into account, and councillor Foster needs to remember that we are also a part owner of some of Shelley Bay, and therefore it's rather difficult to have a housing development without our agreement at a more detailed level as well. Speaking to this, right, councillor Foster, you'll write a reply by the looks of things.
Madam second, very, very quickly. Look, you're quite right, Madam Mayor, and I certainly am very well aware that council is a part owner of the site in terms of the legal roading areas, even if the legal roads aren't actually the actual roads, and that's an issue which we will sort out. And you're quite right also that Shelley Bay does, will offer benefit to treaty partners. I guess the question is, is the shape of the development, whether it needs to get into the open space area. Yes, the open space values will have to be taken into account. The question is one of principle, and I suppose we've just had a big principle debate, you know, very recently. For me, the principle is that open space means open space, and given that we haven't had an amendment, I will have to vote against that particular one.
Thank you. Would you like to take me to take one E separately?
Yes, please.
Okay. So we are now going to be voting on one, A, B and C, unless anyone wants any of them taken separately? Please, those in favour, please raise your hands.
Yes.
Thank you. You might be playing... No, don't worry about the sporting analogies, I might get them wrong. Thank you. And now we will move to recommendation one... Sorry, against. Beg your pardon? Thank you, I declare that carried. Thank you. I declare that carried. Now we are going to vote on recommendation one E, Shelley Bay. And I have a, I hope you're, please raise your hands if you're voting for one E. And Eagle. And those voting against the Shelley Bay? Thank you. I declare that carried as well, ten five. Now councillor Foster, it's time for you to introduce the proposed disposal of hundred and fourteen B.
I move.
Those in favour, raise your hands. I think that's unanimous. And those against, we didn't have any against, so, okay. Sorry, councillor Eagle, can you indicate for Able Smith Street proposed disposal?
Sorry?
Yeah, I heard the sorry, but are you a four? You're a four. Excellent. Thank you. So moving on to the next paper. We now move to resolution to exclude the public pursuant to provisions. Yes, yes, sir. Thank you for pointing that out. To go into public excluded session, however, permitting Adam Holloway and Kerry. Councillor, can I just have advice from officers? Let's just check the latest version. Let's just wait a moment, just make sure that we're clear. I would have thought that it was potentially debatable. I'm not encouraging you to debate it, but I.
Of course we can, it is debatable.
Yeah. Right, well, let's just debate it. Now, I'll rule that we can debate it on this occasion, and if we find differently, we will find out. So who wish, councillor Ritchie, you wish to debate whether we go, I'm moving that we go into public excluded. Do I have a second, councillor Arpani Mercer? Do you wish to speak councillor Arpani Mercer?
Well, I'd like to just amend that with the exception.
Can you stand up please?
With the exception of the Wellington City Council Security Services contract, and I'll speak to it very briefly, but I won't go into the detail, and also the local government funding agency annual general meeting. The issue, all I want to say about the Wellington City Council Security Services contract is simply that at some point this information is publicly. That can't be now. And.
And the second. Wait, actually, I think you actually have, well, they left because they didn't understand where we were at. The webcast is still going. So don't say anything you will regret.
The second. Are you sure? I think they wanted to leave after I'd spoken.
I'm being interrupted. Just a moment, councillors, are you aware this is still being webcast? I would like you to listen to councillor Ritchie in silence, and then we will vote as to whether we go into public excluded or not. Perfectly good bit of democracy.
So the first point is the contract, the final contract should be made public. So I see no reason why it can't be now. And secondly, an annual general meeting is a public meeting, and I see no reason, or should be, why that matter cannot be discussed in public as well. So I move an amendment, parts one and two, separate for each item. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a second, councillor Ritchie? No. I will ask for officer advice on this matter. Councillor, sorry, councillor, you will have officer advice just on this matter? I'd like to share the advice that I've just received on whether this should or should not be. Could you please cover address? First of all, the matter about the security contract, and secondly, councillor Ritchie's other matter.
So firstly, I've just given advice to her worshiped mayor that there may be things in the public excluded paper, and Andy can talk to that as well, which is information council has been given as part of a tender process. And when you go to the market, you put out for tender on a contractual basis, it's called a process contract, you have promised the people who tended that you would keep their information confidential. So if you choose to release that information by voting against having a public excluded session, then you may be breaching your contractual obligations to those parties. So that is my advice, that you do not do that. And Andy can confirm.
Okay, that's very clear. I will now move to Mr Matthews regarding the LGFA AGM.
Through you, madam mayor. Regarding the LGFA AGM, the key point there in relation to the public exclude aspect regards to the confidentiality and privacy around the election of board members, as is normal in the case where you were discussing your vote around the election of board members, that is in the public exclude part of your agenda.
Just in case anyone wants to raise any issue about the proposed people, that's exactly what we do when we're talking about appointing people to our CCOs. So having asked a question, does anyone else wish to say?
Look, my issue isn't so much the security contract. I think we've debated that to death, so that's not really the point. It's around this local government funding agency. I'm sorry, I think the public interest clearly outweighs the rights of individuals in this matter. They're going to be paid apparently quite a lot of money, we'll come to debate that. And I actually think that people do have the right to see who exactly is being put up. The other thing too, is whether that people should be able to see too how we are actually achieving any diversity in terms of the people that we appoint to make the decisions that have quite a fundamental impact on the way we manage our finances. And, you know, I've got some concerns around groupthink, so I think that will be something I will want to talk about a bit in more detail. But actually, I think this should be far more transparent. It has been contentious. There have been some local authorities that have raised some issues around the level of payment, and I don't see why we shouldn't do it in public.
Thank you. I'll just briefly speak to this. My view is that if somebody is put up here and for some reason we vote against them, that is actually not really fair that that should be in public, in my view. I think absolutely, if you had a policy position to make, which you could have done any time since we had the papers, that said we should appoint a certain percentage or what kind of super diversity we're looking for, of course we can debate that. I'm very proud of the fact we actually have more women directors than are directly appointed CCOs than, they're actually the majority now, for possibly the first time. However, I will not be supporting a move either for the security contract nor for who is going to be elected to the local government funding agency. So do we have a, sorry councillor?
Yeah, I just have a question.
Councillor, we've had the time for questions, we've moved to debate. And councillor, you could have asked by email from wherever you are.
Now, it relates to the public excluded issue.
Councillor, I'm not having any more questions. You've made your points. Councillor Pennett's debated, I've made my points. Is there anyone else who wishes to debate the issue? Councillor Free?
Well, I just would like to make the comment that I think these are quite high director's fees for a position which to me seems to have very little actual risk. Oh, sorry, sorry, this is okay.
Absolutely. Councillor Foster has made the very excellent point that I actually had exercised my right of reply, it would appear. So can we just vote on whether we're going to go into public excluded or not? So those in favour of going to public excluded? So hands up please. And Eagle. And against? And councillor Ritchie? Okay, right, thank you very much. And we've got councillor Eagles happy to go into public excluded. So we will now pull the curtains, turn off the machine. Turn off the machine.